So excited for her.
Yep.
We'll call to order the Stevens Point area Public School District Regular School Board Meeting for Monday, February 10th, 2014. Barb, roll call and verification of forum, please.
Mr. Evil?
Here.
Ms. Faxon?
Here.
Mr. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Presley?
Here.
Mr. Rothman?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Shively?
Present.
Ms. Shurek?
Here.
Ms. Totten?
Here.
All right, item three, approval of the agenda. We have been asked to take out items eight A and D on the consent agenda, correct?
Correct, and I also have another request that closed session witch hunt be done in open session instead of closed, which is 11A.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that again? The closed session what?
I called it a witch hunt under 11A.
Really?
No, really.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there other changes to the agenda?
Yep, I would like to request that the closed session is postponed, possibly till next Monday. We have to come in anyways. I believe that no good decisions are made after 10 or 11 o'clock. I would like to postpone this. We postponed last week's, and we can do them all at the same time. I believe we have to come in on Monday at 6, was it? 6:00 or 6:30? And we could do it all.
Okay. Angel, you had one?
Sorry. This is for 9E5. Staff Morale Plan. I'm the one that requested this. So because I requested this, we've had a long time to discuss it, but we have information in our possession right now that we'll be discussing in closed session that requires me to ask that this be removed from tonight's agenda. I respectfully ask that it's not discussed at all until the full board has all the necessary information.
Are there any other recommended changes? Okay, we have an issue. We have two different requests on how to handle the closed session, either in open or to postpone it for a week. Which do you, or do you wish to vote on that separately?
Separately.
Okay. That work for everybody? All right, so the motion to approve the agenda, the open agenda excluding closed, is as printed, except that we are pulling out eight A and eight D, and we'll discuss those separately, and we're removing item 9E5. Is there a motion to that effect?
Move to approve it. Agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
There's a second? That's not talking about the closed session, correct?
Right, we're going to deal with the closed session then.
Okay, then I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion? Barb, roll call vote on the open portion, please.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Shurek?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
No.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now we're back to the closed session. Between you two ladies, is there a recommendation? Do you wish to, do you wish to conduct it in open, or do you wish to postpone it for a week? What's your preference?
Can we do both?
Well, we can do separate ones. Vote on the opening, the one that she wants into open session, and how, depending on how that goes, then vote on the remaining or all of it to postpone it.
All right.
Can we do it that way?
Sure. So does somebody want to make?
I'd like to make a motion that 11A be held in open session.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
11A.
Closed session. There being no discussion, Barb, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Evil?
No.
Ms. Faxon?
No.
Mr. Larson?
No.
Mr. Presley?
No.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Shively?
No.
Ms. Shurek?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay. Kim?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone the closed session until our meeting on Monday 17th, is it?
Correct. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Faxon?
No.
Mr. Larson?
No.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Absolutely not.
Ms. Shively?
Um, yes.
Ms. Shurek?
Yes, absolutely.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
No.
Mr. Rothman?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you, guys.
I'll have an agenda. Um, the Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight we have students from Washington Elementary.
Excuse me, but don't you have to approve the closed session? Or did we, I think you, we were moving to postpone it. We haven't approved the agenda for the session.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry.
We can do it after this.
Sure, we'll do it right after.
(audience) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job.
So I'm very pleased to have students from Washington Elementary. I'm going to ask you to step this way.
A little bit.
And you're not only going to be on that camera and on our district website, but also video stream live, but your parents are taking pictures of this so that when you're 35 years old and you have children, you can say, "Look what I did." Does that work for you? Good, that works for me, too. So Claire Swicki, Mr. Rothman, the president of the board, is giving hand-did certificates. Alex Helgerson. There you go, Alex. Peyton Wanta.
Peyton.
And Jack Simmers.
Jack.
There you go.
Now he's going to turn around.
Because Mr. Vemousky there is going to take a picture, make sure it doesn't cover your face. Smile, there you go. There you go. Okay, so now we're going to introduce our folks like I promised. Jack, you go first.
This is my mom and dad.
And their names are?
Amy Summers and Mike Summers.
There you go. All right, Peyton.
My mom is Amy and my dad is Bill.
And they're back there. There we go, Bill. There you go, Amy. Okay. Mr. Helgerson?
My mom is Arjuna and Andrew.
Very good, thank you. And Claire?
My dad is Kit Swicki and my mom is Aunt Kit. My daddy is DeeDee.
And where's Kit?
He's there.
Right there he is, okay. Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate what you do for our kids as well. And thank you very much. And I would be remiss if I didn't recognize where is young Mr. Ryan Orata? Where is he? There he is, our principal of Washington School with his own little one there. He's a pretty good guy. Is Mr. Orata a good guy? All right, the board members would like to meet you, so we will shake our hands. There you go.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There you go.
Good job.
Thank you so much. You did a great job, thank you.
Nice job, Jen.
Thank you for coming.
Ready to go?
Thanks for coming.
Ready to go?
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming in. Good job, Jen.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
You're welcome, folks, to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but might be walked after this. Okay.
It's a little worse.
We have a little special presentation for the board that Kennedy School did on their own. So Claire Clover, our principal, and Sue Colross, one of the teachers there, come on up.
Hey, we think you should get a hand, just for company.
Come on, come on, come on. All the way up here, all the way up here. There you go.
Well, one of the things-
Should I hold this for you?
Turn this around? Or let Sue want to do that?
There you go.
One of the things that we've done at Kennedy to help us keep a positive student-centered focus is we developed a community and celebrations committee. This committee has helped us to find and recognize people and programs that support our school and our community. And we found that school board appreciation month is celebrated nationally in January or February. Wisconsin has not designated a month, so we picked February. So our students and staff signed a appreciation card. It's crowded around the building and signed.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, we can actually, Mr. Rothman, who will promptly, probably hang it in here somewhere. Would you want to say anything, Terry?
Well, no, just that, it's, you know, it's wonderful that you folks thought of us, and we do have some longings, but we truly do have the best interest of you, and we truly do appreciate this. And we'll find it appropriate to hear.
All right, thank you very much. All right, and Sue, you can stay right here.
I'm here.
Yes, you can.
Well, thank you very much, though I don't get to shake your hand.
There you go. You got it.
Thank you.
You'll get to do that in a minute.
I will? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So we began a recognition program this year that was part of our Staff Morale Plan, and that is having students identify someone in their building who has made a significant difference in their lives. And they could pick a bus driver, food service worker, custodian, EA administrator, teacher, volunteer.
Now it's Kennedy today.
Now, so I visited Kennedy today. Geez, I wonder why that happens? And so what we have is we have Talia Rogers. So Talia, you want to come on up? See, so you didn't get to know-
You weren't just hanging out with your parents.
So Talia was selected as the student, and Talia selected Sue Colross, who is a longtime Kennedy teacher there, a leader in many ways. So Talia has something to read.
Dear Ms. Colross, you are my favorite teacher. You always have a great attitude. You're always trying to find the best in a student or person. Every time you walk into a classroom, you brighten the room up. You always try to challenge every student. When I left 4th grade, I was so sad not to get you as a teacher again. If you keep teaching how you teach right now, no student will ever hate school when you're their teacher. Thanks, Ms. Colross, for being the best teacher.
First, this is a certificate. We simply call it Student/Staff Recognition. It's awarded to Sue Colross, 4th grade teacher. Your student/staff recognition is presented to you for the positive and lasting impact you have made on my fellow students and me. We are a family of teachers and learners. You have taught me and many others the essentials of how to learn, the values to live a good life, and how I might pay it forward. With heartfelt thanks and gratitude, February 10th, 2014, signed by me and, most importantly, Talia.
Thank you so much.
So do you want to say anything?
Just that I always feel that my students can learn, and I'm trying to find the best in each student that I have, and I value them as individuals.
Thank you.
Well done. You're welcome.
Photo, photo soon first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Did you come along, Talia, or your parents here?
My parents.
Terry, can I just add something? Because Sue Colross had all my kids, I apologize, had all my kids, and I want to dit- sorry, that's kind of showing her how long she's been there, but I want to ditto everything that she said. Not only does she help the kids out, but she helps the parents out as they go through the ups and downs at elementary, so I also want to thank you, so.
Charlie, you want to introduce your parents?
My mom, Terry Rogers, my dad, John Rogers, and my sister, Keely Rogers.
Well, welcome, folks, and thank you very much. And did you bring anybody with you to introduce?
I brought my principal, Clover Schmidt.
Wonderful. There you go. Okay, so let's, we're going to look at Mr. Vemousky here. Wonderful, thank you again.
You did a nice job. That was wonderful. I had to do the elbow thing. I have to do the elbow things. Congratulations.
Thank you. I have a couple of announcements.
Congratulations.
All right, we got ahead of ourselves on the pledge, I apologize for that. We do need a motion to approve the closed session agenda. Is there a motion to-
Second.
Jeff and Bob, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
No.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shively?
Um, yes.
Ms. Shurek?
No.
Ms. Totten?
No.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. We've done community, anything else?
Yes, I do have just a couple of other recognitions to announce. There are some winners, student winners of artwork, that will travel on a regional competition for the Boys and Girls Club, and I wanted to recognize those students. In the age group of 16 to 18, Laney Cook and Stephanie Landis. In the age group of 13 to 15, Tori Neiman and Rachel Koleski and Ashley Vang. In the age group of 10 to 12, Sarah Chakowsky and Hannah Siegel. And in the age group of nine and younger, Brooklyn Brown and Oliver Lind. These students' artwork will travel, as I mentioned, in a regional competition among boys and girls clubs, and we're very, very proud of their efforts. And if any of them win in that regional competition, we will bring them back for further recognition. Keller Anderson, a 4th grader in Mrs. Workis's room, took it upon herself, took it upon himself, I'm sorry, to be, to do a fundraiser for the Portage County Drug Dog Program. His efforts netted the county $400 to be used for the program. This is just another example of the generosity and civic awareness and responsibility that's exhibited at Roosevelt Elementary School by staff, students, and families. Sean Cordy and Anna Katner were asked to produce a video about seclusion and restraint that the district will use for staff trainings. These are two Spash students, and they did that. The video turned out exceptionally well, and it will serve us well for many years. Sean is a senior at Spash and Anna is a junior. They're students of Mr. Vanderloop, and this particular video, as I mentioned, will be used for staff trainings with regard to seclusion and restraint. Also, we just recognized Talia and Sue Colross. And I also wanted to mention something that we probably will be recognizing in the future, but just to kind of give them a little bit of a boost. 16 members of the Stevens Point area FCCLA attended the 2014 Wisconsin Region 3 Star Students Taking Action for Recognition event competition. 15 students competed in 11 different star events. Also attending was Samara Zalinski as a tabroom helper and Brett Lesniak as the chapter advisor. The chapter did exceptionally well. Nine events received gold and two events received silver rankings. The students are very excited to be moving on to the Wisconsin FCCLA Star Event Competition. It'll be held on April 1st during the 2014 Wisconsin Leadership Conference in the Wisconsin Dells. In the gold category, Brooke Chefchik from PJ Jacobs and Kiara Yamros from Ben Franklin in Entrepreneurship won a gold, Janessa Galarsky in Career Investigation won a gold, Adie Fisher and Max Wagner in Chapter Service Project Portfolio won a gold, Sidney Merrill and Nicole Seider in Environmental Ambassador took gold, Morgan Altman and Jessica Yule Interior Design Gold Medal, Tanya Kransky, National Programs in Action, also a gold medal, Gabrielle Kazuski, Recycle and Redesign, a gold medal, Ashley St. Arblin Clark in Teach and Train took a gold medal, congratulations, Ashley, and Zachary Wookiee in Culinary Creations took a gold. And in the silver medal category, Ally Meyer took a silver in Child Service Lesson and Haley Clark in Life Event Planning. Congratulations to the FCCLA chapter and good luck at the state competition. That's it.
All right, onto public comments. We do have four people wishing to speak tonight. Actually, our agenda is a bit lighter, and we have fewer people wishing to speak to fewer topics, so Barb, let's allow five minutes tonight. Under public comments, we have Angel Faxon, followed by Marlene McLaren, then Glenn Rindel, and then Kim Shurek.
Angel Faxon, 2650 Fawn Lane, I'm speaking as a member of the public. I've had many comments this week and received several emails about the fact that I haven't been talking a lot at board meetings recently, so I thought I would address it, make my, where I'm at, clear. I've got two jobs in the public, I have eight children. Somehow, every word that I say here is reflected on each one of them. Each one of them has their own lives and situations, and they're not always prepared to handle what's said to them. As a result of that, I've been weighing my words very carefully and considering how people's interpretation of what I do or don't do will affect my family and my children and my work.
Thank you, Angel. Marlene?
Marlene McLaren, 1609 Michigan Avenue. And maybe just because of what you said and not saying things, maybe that's the approach that I would hope some of you take in some of the comments that are said, like the Free White &amp; 21 comment last week, as well as the interaction between Bob Larson and Renee and what he said about her not feeling well. It's just, I sit in the back and I just am shocked sometimes. So I would hope that maybe we would not say certain things if it would help things along. Thank you.
Glenn?
Glenn Rindel, 1024 Brawley Street, Stevens Point, speaking as co-president SBA. Thank you for the opportunity, for the five minutes, I will not need it. I'll just be finishing up comments about bargaining tonight, and I'll move on. I want to thank Mr. Larson for bringing forward some information that I think is important for the public to hear, not just the board, specifically recurring statistics and taking a look at what's going on money-wise in district. I think everybody understands the financial issues that for the past four years, almost every category of employee has not received any pay raise until the past year, referring specifically to educational assistance, AFSM, Teamsters, other groups, including educators. But in showing the statistics that Bob brought out last week, I just want everybody to let this sink in, because I think there's a lot of misinformation about our pay. For example, number one Bob mentioned, our starting salary went from 65th to 131st. That means there are 130 districts paying more than us for starting teachers. That's almost a third of the districts that are willing to say will pay more for starting teachers, and we've dropped from 65th to 131st. I don't think you're going to find that in any other school district. Our salary, average salary, dropped from 22nd. Again, we're a top 20 school in population, you know, tax base makes sense, right? Large school, largest city, to 56th, okay? That's a huge fall when it comes to the average salary. When we take a look at high salaries, we went from 11th to 47th in high salaries, okay? So what we're saying is every category is taking a huge hit. Now, people used to say we had enormous fringe benefit with tons of money and that type of thing. We were 107th. When people were saying we were at the top, there was actually 126 districts who had better benefit packages. When people were saying our benefits and our pay were so high, there's a choice, salary or benefits. In this case, the choice was salary, benefits suffered. We were at 131. We went from 107 to 154. So to say, Bob, that we're right up there, and I know you said in some cases, is just not true. I mean, if you want to compare us to Pittsville, I think they'd love to have our salary schedule, but then again, they don't have the tax base. They don't have anything. They don't have the program. They don't have the ability to offer what we offer in the Stevens Point School District. So I think that's a real issue. And if you add those numbers in the fall and the four years without a raise, I don't think you're going to find anything comparable. And one of the ones that I want to mention is the fringe benefits, because this came out also. Hopefully, I'm not opening any board eyes, about the verdict that came out by Marathon County. In 2012, if everybody remember back, there was an issue with long-term care. Our long-term care benefits were taken away. And we said, "Well, when was that?" And they said, "Well, it happened previously in a closed session where you voted in a closed session." And they said, "Well, didn't you come out into the open? It was never in the minutes." And I said, "No, we voted in a closed session, apparently from legal advice, from whoever." Marathon County came back, and again, this moved to Marathon County because apparently where there were some issues where Portage County didn't want to deal with it because of some connections with board members or whatever, so moved there. And just to let you know, the man who put it forward, if you take a look at his name as far as Ryan Whits, isn't, I can't pronounce his name, it's a tough one, he's new to the job, he took a long time in going through this, and finally, on December 9th, he came forward. But what he clearly stated is that it does not, it does appear that the stated justifications for the closed meeting on the state were not justified. Now, as many of you know, he decided not to move forward, because what we're talking about is, what happens is, if you have an illegal action, or let's say something happens in a meeting that is not just, it can void the action, and that doesn't count. Now, if you can imagine the mess, if Marathon County had stepped forward because you wanted to hide for four months on this long-term care, millions of dollars, you know that, millions of dollars were in play, and I don't understand why. And if you wonder why we have issues about confidence, it's like, to hide from us that you got rid of long-term care and to risk millions of dollars? Because this just states, it would be such a mess, and again, this is my interpretation and our interpretation from our, we act lawyers, that to try and say you have to put back long-term care for all of us because you did not do it properly, because of the millions of dollars, is kind of tough to prove. And they weren't willing to say automatically. That doesn't mean the case is closed, it doesn't mean it's open. But this is the kind of judgment we're talking about, where to just say everything is good for us, to just say everything is fine, that you're getting paid a lot, we've got a lot of people, especially new teachers coming forward, that we need to address, that we really need to address. And moving forward, we're getting somewhere. We're actually getting somewhere. But honestly, I don't think they're getting there fast enough, and I'm not sure we can get there with this current leadership. That's just where we are. I can tell my students, I'm going to do good for you, but it's their choice.
Kim?
Can I just get clarification first, before I go up there? Since Mr. Winiger is going to be talking about plover whiting, can I comment on that at that time also?
Mr. Winiger is going to talk about plover whiting.
In his superintendent report.
Yeah, in his superintendent report, he's got plover whiting update. Can I talk about it then? Okay, because that's what I wanted to talk about.
Oh, okay.
So I will decline at this time.
Okay. All right. Thank you all. Moving on to item seven, presentations and information, starting with Spash Student Senate Report, Ashley.
Okay, at the beginning of the semester, Spash took on several Chinese students that were hosted through a UWSP program. Their last day will be tomorrow at Spash, and they will be having a pizza party, farewell party, during lunch with their Spash shadowing students. It's been a great experience for the students at Spash. Wednesday is an early release day, we'll have 28-minute classes. Red and Black Week is next week, we'll have a pep fest and a dodgeball tournament on Friday, and 11 members of the UW marching band will be performing that day. And 11 members of the UW marching band will be performing that day. Winter Formal is that Saturday at 7:30. Parent-teacher conferences are this coming Monday, which we have no school, and Thursday from 4 to 8. As Mr. Wininger said, the FCCLA members attended the regional competition and will be sending all of their members onto the state competition. And the jazz band would like to invite the board on Friday, January, or February 21st at 5:30 at the Elks Club will be jazz night, so the SPAS band will be playing.
I'm sorry, Ashley, what was the date?
Friday, the 21st at 5:30 at the Elks Club.
Okay, thank you.
It's jazz night.
Uh-huh.
Is that it, Ashley?
Yep, that's it.
Item B, board comments. Jeff Evil.
Thank you. A couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to attend the annual Wisconsin Association of School Boards Convention in Milwaukee. And I was representing this school board as the delegate down there. So it was all new to me, and it was a wonderful experience, and I just wanted to share a couple of the highlights with you. I attended the new delegate orientation program on Tuesday night, and then the assembly on Wednesday. And at the assembly, the delegates basically discuss and vote on resolutions that are brought forth by the association. There were 15 resolutions that were brought forth, and then sometime, I think Tuesday, there was an emergency resolution that was also brought forward, giving a total of 16 resolutions to be discussed and voted on. All but two of the resolutions that were proposed were approved. Two of them were voted down. Interestingly enough, one was dealing with seat belts in school buses, and the other had to do with weapons in school. And now, does community have access to these resolutions? Is this public?
I don't know. We could put it on the website. It's public information.
Yeah, I think that would be good. If anyone is interested, we'll see if we can make that information available to you.
Jeff, are the votes on there as well?
I have the votes here, so if we can include that too. I attended a couple of workshops, a couple of presentations, one dealing with the involvement of industry and business in the educational process, particular manufacturing. Manufacturing is alive and well in Wisconsin. And the speaker that we had was from the General Electric's gas engine plant in Waukesha. And interestingly enough, the manager from that plant was the one that was interviewed by President Barack Obama when he came to Wisconsin. But it was an excellent program, and what they have done to bring the schools and the industry together to make sure that the schools are meeting the needs of the businesses in the community. It was wildly successful, and I think there are a number of things that we should probably be considering, which I'll bring forward at some future date. And then lastly, the other program that I thought probably had the most value to me was one that was presented by Luanne Byrd. It was called Forward Thinking: Our Communities, Our Schools, Our Future. And the school districts from, actually, it was three communities involved. It was Greendale, Greenfield, and Whitnall. They are all in the same school district, and they got together and formed this program where they involve the community in taking a look at where they wanted to take the school district, what was the future, what the future would look like. And it was wildly successful, getting the community involved with the educational process, finding out what the community envisions as being a good education system, what they wanted to see. Luanne has offered to come up here and present to the board what they did and how they did it. It was a very specific process that they used, and it was very effective. And actually, we did go through a little bit of it at the presentation, so she had us actually go through the process. I am very interested in a long-term strategic plan for the school district, and I think this program here is an excellent way to involve the community, the business, all the stakeholders basically, in the educational system, involved in looking at the strategic plan for the district. It was wildly educational for me. I thoroughly enjoyed it, looking forward to doing it again.
Jeff, while you have the floor, any Wasby legislative updates for us tonight?
I don't, actually.
Okay, very good. Bob Larson?
Thank you. I just want to thank Ellen and Deb Martin of Martin's Machinery for giving me a tour of their facilities and be able to see the cutting technology they're using. I know it's a great place to work, because I talked to one gentleman that started there at 14-years-old, been there 30-years, so I know he has a good employer. One of the things that I thought was something to see was, I don't know if you can see my finger, about that size, is a new heart pump that he was building, new technology. You put it in your hand, it's so light, you don't even know it's there. After I got home, I told my wife, had I known what I was going to see and be exposed to, I'd have loved to have her come with me to see some of this stuff. I would hope our guidance counselors would take a tour of Martin Machinery's facilities and also discuss with parents and students, and maybe do something with the youth apprentice program, because I see nothing but good things coming out of Martin's Machinery. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. I know a number of us have been there, and it is an amazing tour. So if you have the opportunity, please take advantage. Jeff Presley?
I chose two topics. The first one is the Century One-on-One Initiative. I have to admit, I'm not a blogger, but I do read the blogs that are out there in our tab, in our news, you know, about the school district. The one that really caught my attention was in the City Times about the One-on-One Initiative. There were some blogs about, especially one from, and I don't know who this is, attention to you, who really got what we're trying to move forward with as a board, and some of the members of this board, opening up the transparency and getting things out there as a cooperation and a partnership. To that extent, One-on-One Initiative is very important to me and my family. I have two kids that are in the district. This One-on-One Initiative will directly affect my children. They're in those grades that will be affected. I have a younger daughter who, eventually, this will affect her, but it is imperative that this board and this administration start thinking outside the box. Building a box as a training center, I don't think is the answer. Offering alternatives and moving forward those alternatives is the answer, and we need to think outside the box on this One-on-One Initiative. We have decided as a board to take the money from Century. We need to live up to our part in honoring that partnership, or I'm sorry, the grant, or I don't think I can use the word partnership. I don't know what the word I can use. But that relationship with Century in making sure that we are good stewards of that dollar, but also make sure that we put up the equal resources, if not more, to ensure that our students and our staff are trained and able to use that technology. We can't just throw a laptop or an iPad or Chromebook or whatever on their desk and say "have at it." We need to put the financial backing into it. As a board, we have not seen those numbers. We don't know what it's going to cost. I don't want to see us shooting from the hip, so to speak, in making those determinations. We have started our budget process last month. It's important that this board sees something in the next month or two of what those numbers look like and what that plan's going to be. We plan on buying that technology right away. Implementing it, I would highly recommend that we do not implement for at least six months, if not a year. I don't want to, I know Renee is going to be talking about thoughts on technology plan, and I don't want to steal her thunder on that. But I think it's important that we make sure that we do it right on Phase 2. We got a second bite at the apple, so to speak, and we want to make sure that we do it right. Self-interest, you're darn right. My kids will be directly benefiting from it, but it's all our children in this district that it's important that we do it right. So I'm going to bring this up periodically and talk about it, and make sure that it stays in the forefront, that this board sees that plan and how that plan's going to be implemented. The old way of doing it, if they don't get their technology center and going back to the old way, is not acceptable. We need a new way and a new partnership in figuring this out. On a more somber note, unfortunately, I've received some emails, I've had some conversations, I've had people approach me. I'm not going to repeat the phrase that was said last week. I think everybody knows the phrase that we're talking about. I want to offer my deepest apologies to those who are offended. On behalf of myself, I sit on this board, and I take it very serious of what this board's actions are. And to the community, to the students, to the staff, I apologize for that statement that was said last week, and hope that we can move forward.
Renee?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to talk a little bit about the implementation of the technology. I wanted to thank Century Insurance for their generous funds that they have provided to our school district, as well as the work that has been done by Brian Casey, our technology director, Dr. Wininger, and the committee. And I was doing some research, looking at what other districts have done, and one of the districts is the Madison Metropolitan School District. And Jeff, one of the things that they did is, they have a new superintendent, so they went through a strategic planning process where they invited all the stakeholders, as well as students and things. And part of that strategic plan that they came up with was an information and technology plan from 2014 to 19, so it's five years. And the vision that they have is that the technology will be student computing, staff computing, and school learning spaces, networks and servers, student information systems, professional learning for staff, and support for all. And I would really think it behooves us, the board did accept the money and accept the ideas of going forward with this technology. We did not approve a technology center, and I would really appreciate if we could have some dialogue and some openness to looking at some other options. One of the things that they have done in this plan, and anyone can look on it, it's online at the Madison School District, they have it all laid out from vision, phasing, projects, timeline, metrics, as well as their budget, which does include the staff development. But with their One-to-One Computing, which is what they're calling it, they are going to have, each classroom will have technology, and they'll have space so that each teacher can use it within their classrooms. They're phasing that in. And also, they're using their library media centers. And I know in talking with some of the staff at our schools, the LMCs is what we call them, but we've really limited the staffing at those, even though on the elementary level, they have more time with the students sometimes now. So, you know, it'd be a way in which the district could support the LMCs by having additional, having a staff person at each one of the schools in the library media centers. They also have virtual learning spaces where to your junior high, particularly your high school students, they'll have some virtual learning spaces within the high school buildings where students can gather, and they could even do some e-learning or, and work with some staff there, utilizing some of the Wisconsin e-school network resources. And they're also talking about keeping their computer labs that they have. They have a really nice outline of their professional learning for staff, and then they also have costs, which I believe Mr. Presley, or Jeff was talking about, Jeff Presley was talking about. And I think that would be something important for the school, for us as a board to look at in terms of what the costs are associated with it. When you look at having a technology center, and I received numerous emails from parents, as well as community members, that they love the idea of the technology, it's just that putting a million dollars into a technology center, what they've seen in their workplaces is that it's mobile and that you don't need to have a place to do the training. And they encouraged us to look at putting those in our schools and addressing it that way. So I'd really encourage us as a board, and also encourage Brian Casey, Dr. Wininger, and the committee to look at some options of doing that. I know it's different than what was, you know, ideally laid out, but with not having that approved, I do hope that we can move forward, and I think there are some things that we could move forward with without delaying it until the second semester. I kind of disagree a little bit with Jeff, but I think we could if we could pull some people together. And if you build a technology center, you have those ongoing costs that you have to keep up. If you actually hired staff, you have ongoing staff costs. But I, for one, would rather pay the ongoing staff costs that would be working with our students versus building costs. So I wanted to thank the committee, Century Insurance, Brian Casey, and Dr. Wininger and the committee for bringing forward the technology grant, and I look forward to discussing in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Item D, the Expeditionary Learning Charter School Contract. Reed, you wish to speak to that?
You know, this is getting old, and I'm getting wore out on this matter, and I would assume, I hope some of you are also. This just keeps coming back. It's my understanding that you voted, you know, that it wouldn't come back until after the supercommittee's report, and here it's back again. And I believe it's because the president of the school board, who is in support of it, just keeps putting it on there, and he's putting it on there before the election because he probably figures he's got the votes. This is all about, my opinion, backroom dealing or whatever else you want, emailing or whatever else. I know how this school board is running. Telephone calls, meetings, and emails, it's, it isn't being done here. But let me just, you know, mention, because you'll have this group come up, and they'll have five people, and they'll go on forever, trying to convince you that, you know, the board voted to approve the concept in education. This is how you people get trapped into this. You voted because to look into the matter, okay? Okay, you looked into the matter. But they got you, as soon as you look into it, then a little bit more, and then you got to do this, and now that you looked into it, you got to do this, and you got to do that. See, this is how this group just keeps taking you down the line on this matter. And then, if they could find funding, that's like, they take that to mean, well, if they could do this and fund it this way, then we should be able to do it. That's what you meant. That's not what you, what this board, or at least, I hope, a majority you felt, that let them look into the funding of it. And, you know, this to me, and then it says here, you voted on the educational value of it. Okay, there's some value, maybe, to the charter schools in Milwaukee, in places where the school districts are failing. But we're supposed to be A-plus school district. We're not failing. But you, but you read, if you actually read their reports, it's they got to come up with this new concept because our schools are failing. You know, and they can, nah, you know, then if this is such a good idea, you can do this in all of the schools, like you're talking about with the tech program. You know, intertwine this, and if the Martin's got a great idea, Bob, then they can do this in all the schools. You don't have to have this Jackson School deal, you know, for this charter school. And, you know, I didn't really prepare a lot of stuff, because I'm just getting so tired of this stuff. And then normally, you only get three minutes, and what can you do? And tonight, you get five because a couple of board members were going to get to talk. And so I just got a few things here. It's basically, if you look, you know, districts financially would be successfully enrolled residents from the homeschool, people are homeschooling for other reasons. But I talked to the lady, that Valerie Schmitz, and I wonder how many of you people talked to her. She runs the program. She went online when I was talking to her, and she said you'd be in violation if you marketed to one group. It's got to be proportional, and there's no guarantee you'll even get this thing enrolled. You're on the radar screen. That's just one of it. You know, this for me, to me, is for the elite, by the elite, paid for by the public, okay? Then, you know, we can have private charter schools, okay? If they think it's such a great idea, look, if Jackson School becomes available, they just got this thing for Jackson School, you know, then maybe, you know, if we're not going to find a use for it, you could sell it to them, okay? They can, they can then go and, they can, they can recruit, they can plan, and they can pay for it with their own money, okay? That, we could do it that way. But of all the things, get this out to the public, which it's never been. And if you can't, don't have the political will here tonight to just put an end to this, then at least put it out for a referendum, make it an election issue, and let's see what the public really feels about this. But no, they always want to do things, they find a way around referendums for these things because the public, my guess is, if they knew what this was all about, wouldn't go for it, okay? But that's what they do, they find all these things. And so do it that way, then. If you don't have the political will, just to end this. This is not for an A-plus school district. Let's make all of our classes better, and let's just put an end to this. If you're really doing it for the students, do it for all the students, make all our classes better. Thank you.
Mia, Ken, Connie, come on, it's, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you so much for allowing us to come back tonight, since it got a little late the last time we came to present. We have been very enthusiastic, as you've heard many times, speaking about the idea of expeditionary learning. And so we thought we would share with you tonight why it is that we are so enthusiastic about this form of education. And this, it's about a 10-minute video. It's from King Middle School in Maine. So they are also a middle school, as we have proposed, as you well know. And so it'll give you a really great idea of what the kids go through when they go through an expedition, and what this form of education really looks like.
Next, how one public school in New England is taking a different approach to teaching, immersing students in an unusually comprehensive science curriculum that emphasizes problem-solving. Special correspondent John Telenko of Learning Matters, which produces education stories for the NewsHour, has our story. On a crisp fall morning last October, King Middle School in Portland, Maine invited eighth graders to what it calls a kickoff, the unveiling of an in-depth project that would be at the center of nearly all the students' courses for the next four months.
Turn your attention to this slide. This is called Earth at Night.
Science teacher Peter Hill set the stage.
There are certain parts of the world that use a ton of energy. There are certain parts of the world that use a ton of energy. Along with that, 25% of the world's population doesn't have electricity in their home. But enough solar energy hits the earth every hour to supply the entire world's energy needs for a year. So we need to design tools that can capture all that sunlight that's hitting our earth or capture all that wind power that's sitting out in the Gulf of Maine. We need to, wait for it, revolt.
Hill handed the students an ambitious assignment to fulfill by the end of the project.
You're gonna create a device that captures natural energy and transforms it into something that's useful for people in some part of the world.
I was like, I can't do that.
Taking all this in was Leva Pierce.
That's, that's way too much. I was, I don't know the first thing about electricity. I don't know the first thing about windmills. I am totally gonna fail. I was like, there's no way that's gonna happen.
Emma Schwartz.
First of all, I can't build anything and I've never handled a screwdriver in my entire life or an electric drill. Like, this isn't gonna work.
So I want you to think about the big picture here.
Projects that take students into uncharted territory are at the heart of teaching and learning at King. Though it's a regular public school, this approach, called expeditionary learning, is unusual, but could be just the kind of education students need in a rapidly changing world. This expedition began with a design challenge.
We're building robots that are made to collect resources, which are ping pong balls.
Nat Youngren and his classmates were building their robots from kits that allow for an almost infinite number of possibilities.
You can do whatever you want to make them do this, but they have to be able to go out, get ping pong balls and bring them back. I made mine completely sound controlled, so you can control it to turn and move back to your base.
This one has taken much longer.
Working in teams, students spent four weeks perfecting their robots in a class called Tech Ed. Gus Goodwin is the teacher.
This kind of really hones in on engineering. What is the design process? They have to program a robot, build it, tinker with it, and get it to work.
Leva Pierce, who at the kickoff had feared failing, seemed to embrace robotics.
We made this wide thing that when it goes forward, it will catch the balls. It's pretty hard.
Oh, two! We got two! Let's go Chipmunks, let's go! Let's go Chipmunks, let's go!
Just before Thanksgiving, students put their creations to the test at a school competition dubbed RoboWars.
Get it set, go!
Nat Youngren's robot started well enough and stalled. The room was too noisy for its sound controls. As for Leva Pierce, her team finished second. The objective for all the students was that this activity would somehow bring them closer to designing an energy generating device of their own.
The robot competition was really successful. Kids are really, I think they've internalized the design process. They know it's an ongoing process. They know they need to engineer their designs and constantly revise and get feedback. And so we're on our way.
By early December, students were on to the second leg of their journey, learning the science and social issues that would be at the heart of their invention. And the path teachers chose to take students there, an eight-week-long interdisciplinary study of wind power. Science teacher Peter Hill.
We started with a wind turbine. How do these things create electricity? And we took apart a motor. And we said, whoa, there's magnets and wires in here. How do magnets and wires interact to generate electricity?
To make the learning go deeper, in Tech Ed class, students built working model wind turbines.
The criteria for this project is a wind turbine that is stable and sturdy. It has to generate at least one volt of electricity. And the other piece is we want it to be creative, outrageous, ingenious and inspirational.
The politics of wind power was the subject in social studies. Emma Schwartz.
The point is to find a place where it would be good or possible to have a wind turbine, see what the environmental impacts might be if there's a bunch of huge like turbines in the area.
You get those discussions around what is a sense of place and what is scenic beauty and how do you alleviate that issue? Let's see where you are.
Next, Mark Jervis's students will argue for their turbine in a persuasive essay addressed to local officials. But for their life improving invention, students would need to know about faraway places. In English class, they read The Boy Who Harnesses the Wind, the autobiography of William Kanwamba of Malawi, Africa.
He managed to build a big wind turbine, Powers House, and he did it all with like, you know, a book and some trash.
They went through this awful famine and that was really shocking to me that he can go through that and still have hope.
That was, I think that was a really big theme in the book. Like, if you really just try and you don't really stop, no matter what kind of what's in your way, you just, you'll eventually get there.
Inspired by the book, students like Leva Pierce pushed ahead with their own model wind turbines.
I had a lot of struggles with my turbine. And I said, you know what, I'm gonna make this generate more than a volt. So I made a whole new set of blades. That worked a lot better. But then I heard about other people that were getting like, oh, I heard he got six volts. And I was like, oh, gotta get more than that.
After eight weeks and three new sets of blades, Leva and her classmates' wind turbines were finally ready. And King Middle School staged another competition.
The more I got into it, the more I just couldn't stop. I was steadily increasing, which is really, really good.
Each turbine's electrical output was captured by a computer. Leva's topped out at 5.9 volts.
In the team competition.
And when the final tallies were announced.
Give it up for the winners. Lobsters.
Her team finished first. By February, students had reached the final stage of the project, creating an energy generating device that improves people's lives.
As a team of teachers, we brainstormed, you know, what are 10 things that really need to get solved in the world? We came up with purify water, light a room at night, charge a cellphone, stuff like that, just to kind of get kids rolling, just give them a little push to get the creative juices flowing.
The assignment was to create a technical drawing. Emma Schwartz designed a light.
I call it the Rub-a-dub Scrub. It's a sponge that generates light, which you might think, oh my God, everyone's gonna get electrocuted, but no, I'm gonna make sure no one gets electrocuted. As you can see, there's like a little dome with lights at the top. There's scrubbers on the bottom. The scrubbers are attached to magnets which spin around wires. When you rotate it on dishes, the scrubbers rotate. That creates the electrons to flow and that generates electricity.
Leva Pierce created a crank flashlight.
It will have UVB, UVC and a regular light. UVC kills bacteria in water.
Her UVB light is supposed to draw insects away from people.
And it will have off, regular, water, bugs, and I'm calling it the Eco-Brite.
For the final event of the project, parents were invited in to hear all about the students' inventions.
The Rub-a-dub Scrub takes usually wasted rotational kinetic energy.
This is like live, you're showing what you're learning to other people, which kind of gives you something more back, I think.
And you have to be clear and concise. Giving presentations is so important because it really arms you with skills that you'll need later in life.
Just think, if washing dishes could be fun.
Like Emma's invention, the students' creations will go no further than the drawing board. What's more, as they move on to new subjects and new grades, they may forget the particulars of amps and electrons, but some things they will remember.
Through this expedition, I have learned how to communicate with other people to make something happen. And I think that's what changed me most.
Before this expedition, I kind of always said to myself as, I'm good at writing and I'm good at reading and that's what I'm good at. This expedition has completely changed my idea of science, the science is doing and science is building and science is creating.
What makes this school a success? It's not because of any charter status. It's a regular public school. It's not because it caters to some students over others. It's diverse with open admission. The secret, as we saw it, was relevance.
Usually in school, you learn about things that are happening in the world that are bad. In social studies, you might learn about an earthquake. But I feel that schools shouldn't just be about learning about problems. I think they should be about solving them. Because if you aren't learning about how to solve problems, then what will you do when you're out of school?
The expeditionary learning approach is growing and can be found in 161 public schools nationwide.
Well, there's one for all of you who write in asking for positive stories in our world. And tomorrow, we'll have another look at new ways to engage.
So if you ever have an opportunity to go out to Portland, Maine and visit King Middle School, it is amazing. They hold a national site visit every May and their doors are always open and you see these types of things literally happening every single day. So King Middle School and other high achieving EL schools have been in the news a lot recently. And there've been some pretty exciting and incredible developments in the EL world since we all brought this idea to you sometime in November. So we have a lot to talk about and it's incredible what Stevens Point has the opportunity to do with a charter school in EL. So in November, Expeditionary Learning was awarded a grant, a highly competitive grant, about innovation and education and what we can do as an organization to better prepare teachers for the type of learning process that you just saw at King Middle School. Expeditionary Learning was one grant applicant out of 618 nationwide to actually be awarded a $12 million grant to further our own study in how we develop teachers and curriculum and learning opportunities like you see at King Middle School and other EL schools across the country. What's exciting about this opportunity is that EL is literally bringing a new way of teaching students to the nation. And over the next four to five years, we will be able to further fund what our professional development looks like for all of our teachers. So even though the grant is going to basically look at schools on the East Coast, being part of our organization right now benefits everyone. And being part of that EL world, I can't help but tell you the incredible, incredible opportunity your kids have in being part of an EL school, hopefully within the next year or two. So the I-3 grant is something that will be in the news. It is something that will allow us here in Stevens Point, when Jackson does eventually open, to even further the PD that happens within the school itself, but within your district. So in providing this professional development for a core of teachers at Jackson will only better your district. Okay? So I think that's one thing that's really key for us to understand. The other piece that you as a board need to understand as well is that it does take time. And since November, the governance board and the committee that has been really working at making Jackson happen has continued to do the work that is needed. However, there are so many things that we need to get the ball rolling. To create a school like King, it takes incredible planning and putting the right people in that position as far as the staff is concerned. And after having a conversation with Jen and Connie, we've come up with an option that we feel best suits the progress of putting together an incredibly successful school. And it's a bit different than what we proposed earlier, but we feel in order for Jackson to really be a great place, the next option that Connie's going to explain, will get us there.
So the board memo looks very similar to what it did last Monday in describing two options, however, our recommendation is the one that has changed. Basically, the board was really concerned with two major issues, the funding issue and the timing issue of Jackson Middle School for Expeditionary Learning. So the first option talked about funding and we kind of brainstormed ways to get the costs for operating Jackson down as an expeditionary learning school. And part of that was having conversations that should the board approve the technology center, that would help decrease some of the funding costs that the board was very concerned about in terms of when we first presented our funding needs for staffing for Jackson. So that was part. In addition, what we had asked for in terms of a lead teacher and four core teachers, we talked about options that possibly a lead teacher could take on more teaching responsibilities, talking about should it attract seventh and eighth graders from the two junior highs, those FTEs would follow the kids. So what we tried to do in option one was give you some ways that the costs for Jackson could be much less than what we first proposed. But again, those are scenarios. One, the tech center. And two, we're not quite sure who would come to Jackson, but should kids come from the two junior highs, they pull the FTEs with them. So that first option was some decreased costs associated. The second option was more of the board's concern with its timing. And there was a lot of conversation about how does opening Jackson fit with the bigger initiatives that are going on in the district? And that's a great question. So we took a look at what the timing issues were. The second option in talking with DPI, there are some things that you can do when you are a recipient of a planning grant. And we received that $225,000, haven't come near to spend even close to that because you're not allowed to get that second phase of money until the DPI sees a contract in hand, understandably so. And that hasn't happened yet. So one option is you could do nothing and just end the process. And we've spent about $36,000 of that planning grant. The other option to keep the idea moving along and the concept as a possibility is that the board, the district, would pay back roughly from last week in talking with Linda Gennaric, about $36,000 we've expended from that planning grant. And the DPI said you can pay that money back and resubmit your planning grant. In other words, they'll give you that opportunity to start over. Do another year of planning. You're gonna receive reduced costs. Wisconsin is the recipient of federal charter money for some years to come. It's not at the same amount that we received, about $75,000 less, but it still is planning money. The board would need to pay back what's been expended and we would need to compete with all the other schools that do submit planning grants. And that's a competitive body of schools. We were one of 19 schools that they awarded this coming year. So we would have to compete. There were some on our committee felt, well, we're not moving forward, so how will our grant be looked at? And there was a feeling in a very negative manner. At the same time, there are some schools that get a planning grant and nothing happens. And clearly, we have a record of things happening. We have a record of long conversations going over time. It hasn't just died. There's been some brainstorming. There's been some desire to continue to look at the concept. You've supported the concept. So that second option has to do with time. And so after having conversations, and most importantly, if this would happen, making sure it's done right. We're running out of time to do it right. We're just running out of time to get the staff in place. Most importantly, to plan those kinds of expeditions is a whole different way of teaching, whole different set of materials, whole different way of organizing the day. And so we are recommending now on behalf of the governance board and the advisory team, we are asking for the board to approve option two, which would be paying back what we've expended, allowing us an approving resubmission of a planning grant, obviously rewritten to describe all the events that have taken place so far, and then to approve, in a better position to approve a contract with JMSCL Governance Board next December. Questions?
Questions? Chris?
So Connie, when you're talking about we're going to have to go back and compete, we're really way ahead of the game though, aren't we?
Oh, so.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
With all the planning that you've already done.
We would need to rewrite and tweak the grant.
Right.
We would probably want to, for, I'm sure the board would be more interested in redoing our budget, our five-year budget. And then certainly having a very, very detailed narrative of the events have taken place because we are going to want to prove that there has been support, not agreement on all issues, but certainly there's been quite a bit of a support. We've got a strong governance board that is committed. We've got a strong Governance Board that is committed to this concept.
And you did mention, I think, one of the last meetings, that you're actively looking at the other grants.
We are.
Out there to possibly help with whatever funding that you might need also.
We are. And we have two staff members that are looking at some that are specifically, you know, lots of them are very detailed. So we have to really sift through some. But there are actually two grants that we're going to be taking a look at. And right now, we haven't done anything really, really active this past week because we want to wait to see where we're going to fall and what the timing is going to be.
Trey, can I just make one more comment?
Sure.
You know, when I looked at this and read a little about the expeditionary schools, it's pretty hands-on, it's pretty exciting, which kids love. It reminded me a lot of when we did not have 4K in the district. And it took about a year, I think, for them to come forward with a plan. And I remember thinking, this is really wonderful. Excuse me. There's not a guarantee. We don't, I'm sorry. I don't know how, we don't know how many kids are going to be doing this or parents who are going to want their kids in 4K. And the scariest thing was, the kids weren't going to be in our buildings. They were going to be out in the community. And I guess because I knew our buildings, it was just a safety thing and putting four-year-olds on the bus to go to different places and that. But I remember thinking, I know we're not, and from the numbers we had, we're not going to make money the first year, maybe not the second year. But it seems like this is such an amazing thing for our students. And it was almost like a pilot in saying, we need to do this and build on the greatness that's here. And I really supported. I would have liked to have seen it go earlier. But I'm really going to support the second option because I think it's really important that we don't let this go. We have so many things coming up. And if we let this go, we may lose it. And I think it's really, really important to our kids that we don't. So thanks for all your work.
Other questions or comments from the board? Kim?
I've heard from a couple of different people down in the convention about the percentage of our home-schooled students. In your memo here, we have 197 families. Families, is that students?
Families.
So we don't know how many students?
No.
Okay. So if I say 197, that's only one student per family?
No, there's roughly, what I was given information from Barb Rouge, there were 197 families. And I don't recall exactly the number, but she gave me a range from 25 to 35 that would fall in a 6-8 arrangement, should they choose expeditionary learning.
Correct. Well, what I've been told down, you know, down in the conference is that you can only take a percentage of those students. And it's the percentage based on, you calculate it to the school, the students that you already have versus the home students, home-taught students. So we're looking at approximately under 3% that we could pull in. So if I'm doing the calculations right, and mind, it's been a long time since I've been in math, if we only have 197 students, that's probably a little high. We have 6,800 and some students in our whole district. We would only be able to take in five students that are home-schooled because there's a percentage factor there, correct?
Actually, and correct me, Mia, but the charter school law requires that you have an application. So you could have, all of the applications come from anywhere. You apply to come into the charter school, there's an application deadline. And if there's a waiting list, it's a lottery. So you can't dictate the numbers of home-schooled, open-schooled kids. You can't pick and choose. It's application. And then from that application, if there's more students, it's a lottery. What we were trying to say is this kind of a school could potentially attract students who might open and roll out or home-school, but maybe not.
I agree. I'll wait to get some more information on that because someone's supposed to be sending me stuff. And I apologize, I didn't have it here. My other question is, is then the financial consideration. In the school that you're looking at, it's only about $6,400 to put this kid through school. A normal student is almost $11,000. Why aren't we doing this to all of our schools, then? If it's cheaper to fund a charter school, why aren't we doing it to all of them? If it's cheaper?
Well, we have, one of the things that in an EL school is it's very much teacher-led. So you're not going to see some of the administrative costs and other costs associated with materials and supplies. You can use charter school to purchase some of those charter school funds and implementation funds. But it's just different because we don't have an administrative cost associated with that.
Well, and you won't have a cost of the school either because the public will be paying for that. That's not considered in there. I mean, if it costs us roughly your dollar amount, you know, 45, 454,000, if I say the number right, I mean, we're taking that on. The charter school's not, so that's not in consideration in your dollars.
That is, that is operating costs and staffing costs.
So it is considered in the 6,000?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I think I have two more. In your little presentation there, it looked like they took that whole school and turned it into the charter school. They didn't create another school.
Actually, King Middle School is a public school. So it's not a charter school. And any other schools aren't necessarily just charter entities. So there are a number of public schools that choose to just implement the model.
Correct, which, that's what I said before. I mean, if it's such a good model, let's implement it everywhere. You know, that's, yeah.
Works for me.
Yeah. I mean, if we can get that, I mean, in all of our schools. Because that's what I've been saying since day one. You know, is why only serve 150-ish kids when we can serve all 6,000? Which would be great. I mean, yes, our teachers, it's a new way of learning. I mean, so is technology for a lot of our students. Oh, there was one more. I apologize. Again, a great concept, oh, my other question was is, and just, this has just kind of come off the top of my head while we were watching this. I mean, if you're looking at 190-some students, 150 students, I mean, going back to that, taking the King Middle School. Lost my train of thought. So I'm going to leave that one go for right now. Again, the charter school sounds awesome, but I can't vote for this and not until the task force are all done, you know, until we get that all completed to see if Jackson's school is needed elsewhere. So, but thank you.
Other questions or comments from the board? Bob? Go ahead. Angel?
Yep. Just wanted to say thank you for the work that you guys have done. I know that this has sucked up your lives for several months. And it's really great stuff. I'm sorry, it's not going forward right now, but I'll support you now, I'll support you in December. I think this is a great idea. When I hear from teachers, especially elementary teachers, there just seems to be an influx of kids that clearly need a different type of learning. There's a lot of energy and a lot of can't sit still kind of things. And I think this is really going to fill the gap for a group of students that is coming through our district. So I'm excited about it and thank you for everything you've done.
Bob?
I was just going to make a motion when it became available.
But can I ask one clarifying question in the motion? So the motion before us tonight is to approve Option 2, which is to delay the opening for a year. In other words, the first semester of 2015-16. But then there are two trailer parts to that sentence that says, are we approving the resubmission of the charter school planning grant? Are we approving that tonight as well? We're nodding our heads, yes.
You don't have it written.
Can we make these motions separately?
Well, let me, let me finish with the clarifying questions.
Option 2 is asking the board to consider paying back. You wouldn't pay back that money unless you're going to resubmit a planning grant. And then the planning grant, when it's written, needs to come for board approval. You have to sign the grant. So we would need to rewrite it, bring it back to the board before April 15th. So next month.
Okay. And then the trailer, I think you answered as well. And that is to approve the contract. That would come back in December.
Right.
So the real motion tonight is really only to approve Option 2, which is to delay the opening for a year and repay the 36, 37,000.
Right. But it's really important to note that, you know, if JMSCL, the idea of JMSCL would die right now, nothing would happen. I mean, we've used that $36,000. The DPI would say that's really too bad would happen in Stevens Point. All would be done. You don't pay that back if it just dies. If you pay it back, the reason you would pay that back is because you would clearly say, we want to resubmit. And that's the only reason you would pay it back. Because they will not grant a charter for, you know, a school just to wait a year. I mean, you have to pay back the money, resubmit, reapply.
Lisa?
Could we, the issue has been over and over about waiting till we get this task force in. So could you just file an extension? They won't allow you to file a six-month extension or whatever until we get these results back.
They will allow the planning grant to go through 18 months. But we talked with the board before, that would mean opening a school at semester. And just chances are just, it's just not successful for 6th, 7th, and 8th graders to move to a new school at semester. We, it just wouldn't.
So, but could we, could we go with that idea, you know, file the extension, go with that idea, get the report back from the task force, and then say, okay, we're going to do it and we're going to open it at this date? I mean, just, I mean, can they be, would they be more flexible? You know, as long as we're saying, you know, this is why we're waiting. We put in a plan, we change our plan, just like you've changed, you know, to accommodate the issues. You know, and that's all part of a planning grant is, to be able to do those things. So I'm just curious why we're not looking at something like that.
If we wanted to take more time than just this year, and I specifically asked that question to Valerie, who's the DPI consultant that we've been working with. And that said, you can take up to 18 months.
Right.
But you have to open at semester. Then your school has to open at that time. The other, and that's what she explained, here are the other options. You know, if you need more time, because timing was the issue that we talked about.
Right, exactly.
If you need more time, then you could pay back what you've expended, reapply, and then you've got your another year of planning, which would be all of next school year with opening in 2015.
So the 18 months would be at what time?
18 months, we'd have to open at second semester next year.
And that's the part that doesn't.
Yeah. You know, if you're, if you're an elementary parent, that's just, it's just not a good time to educationally open a school, you know. We just, we just don't feel it would, it would do families right or the school. We just probably wouldn't have the kind of population show interest in a school starting and opening at semester than in the fall.
And I get that. I just kind of actually think that might be a blessing in that then you would start small and it would give you an opportunity to work the kinks out. So I don't actually see that as a negative. I actually see that as a positive.
We would have to have an absolute minimum of 50 students to open. Otherwise, we couldn't. And then I would get nervous. If you didn't have that 50, then you've gone through all that work to open a school. So there's, you know, there's just lots of different variables in it all.
Very much so. Very much so.
I was just going to make a motion. And the motion that I was going to make is that Stevens Point School Board does not authorize the Jackson Middle School for Expeditionary Learning to resubmit the 2013-2014 planning grant to Wisconsin DPI.
So say that, would you do that again, please?
I would like to make a motion that the Stevens Point School Board does not authorize the Jackson Middle School for Expeditionary Learning to resubmit the 2013-2014 planning grant to Wisconsin DPI.
Can I ask for clarification?
Sure.
So are you saying you want it to stay the way it is right now?
I do not want them to resubmit.
What he's saying is the Expeditionary Learning Charter School dies tonight.
Got it.
In.
Basically.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Bob?
I'll need the overhead.
Oh, sorry, Bob.
That's okay, that's all right. Thank you.
If you go the other way, yeah. If you can squeeze all of it in, I don't know. First thing I want to say is, on this chart 1, I want to say our administration did a very good job on estimating the number of students that will be using our facilities. In chart 1, it shows the grades at elementary. It's hard to see, but it shows your kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. And if you notice, all the class sizes are pretty close together. So whatever we would do in the future, I think we'd be okay for at least six years. Another thing to notice, it's hard to see, but you can see our elementary schools are starting to bust out a little bit on the seams, especially the schools in the Pullover area. And also on chart 1, it's hard to see, but if you look at the bottom, Ben Franklin and PJs, you can see we're utilizing them at 46% to 58%, which means we have room to do a realignment. If you look at SPAS, we're running at 67%. So we do have room, based on chart 1, to do a realignment of our elementary schools. Now Barb, could you put on second chart? The second chart shows moving 6th grade into the junior highs and moving 9th grade into SPAS. And if you notice, after moving 6th grade into the junior highs, there's still plenty of space to do some alignment, even though you moved the 6th grade in. Also, if you took the 9th grade out of the junior highs and put them into PJs, you can see that would push it up to around 89%. Again, looking at the elementary schools, that does help them, but we're still in the high 60s and 70s. And Barb, could you put that chart 3 on there for me, please? Again, these are just my numbers that I got from the facility study that was put out in 2011 and '12. Chart number 3 shows moving 5th grade and 6th grade into the junior highs. And you could do example 5, 6, 7, 8, or you could have 5 and 6 in PJs or Ben Franklin, or 7 and 8 in PJs or Ben Franklin. But it does show a tremendous positive impact on our elementary schools. If you can move that just a little, Barb, so they can see the percentages. It really brings down our elementary schools to a workable number. Basically, the reason I wanted to show these charts is it said, charts 1, 2, and 3 clearly say, do not open Jackson School. It also says, do not sign a five-year contract. Save the taxpayers of the Stevens Point School District $4 to $6 million during that five-year window. The Super Task Force could come back with a recommendation like, and I'm just throwing it out there, put the Technology Professional Development Center in Jackson. Take the Bliss Center, move that into Jackson. Take the Alternative School into Jackson. Sell the Bliss Center. Sell the Professional Building. Consider selling the Emerson Lot to the university or to a private developer. Use these dollars from the sales to put an addition on SPAS, should one be needed. I want to remind the board that on our January 13th, 2014 board meeting, we delayed the decision on the Technology Professional Development Center until we received the report from the Super Task Force. The decision on Jackson School for Expeditionary Learning should also be delayed until recommendations come back from the Super Task Force. I recently received an email that the Governance Board has decided, which they showed, to recommend Board Option 2. Delay the opening of JMSL until first semester of 2015 and '16 school year. Resubmit the charter school planning grant in April 2014 and approve the JMSL district contract in December 2014. This new recommendation changes everything. When I finish my presentation, I will come back to this. As I have heard in previous board meetings, I believe upgrading our school's security to give all our employees and students greater safety takes priority over opening Jackson School. I had some questions for the Governance Board, and I want to thank the Governance Board for answering the questions in a timely manner. I also want to mention the questions in a timely manner. I also want to mention that I reviewed the Jackson School Charter Presentation and wanted to say the presentation that was given by Connie Nigard was accurate and very professional. Example, I thought the 225,000 Planning Grant was presented as one phase, yet when I listened to the tapes, it was presented as Phase One and Phase Two. My mistake. Here are some questions that I asked and they answered, and I want to mention it so the public has this information. Question one: What were the average class sizes for sixth, seventh, eighth grade at Marathon School before the change from traditional to expeditionary learning? And the answer, the average class size was 25 to 26 students. The current class size at the Marathon Expeditionary Learning School is 21 students. That equals to a class reduction of 16 to 19%. This, I believe, is the biggest reason for the above consortium average that you mentioned earlier of a plus 16 points in reading and a plus eight points in math. Question number two: How many homeschool students and virtual school students did Marathon pick up when it changed over to an expeditionary school? The answer, none. No virtual school students or homeschool students have enrolled to date. It's important to note, in five years, no students came from homeschool or virtual school. I mention this because in previous presentations, this was mentioned as a potential new source of revenue, which would impact the cost of opening and sustaining Jackson Middle School Expeditionary Learning. Question number three, originally, you were talking about sixth, seventh, and eighth grade and estimating 150 students at JMSL. Now I see you reduced your teachers from 6.4 to 3.9. Does this mean your student estimate is going from 150 students to 75 students? If you're reducing your estimate to 75 students, how can we, as a board, justify spending four to $6 million on 75 students when we have many needs in our district that need immediate attention, like security upgrade of our buildings? Our business manager, Tom Owens, said, "We do not have the revenue to sustain the opening of Jackson School." That leaves us with limited choices. One, cut programs and lay employees off. Second, take money from our fund-ten balance. Both are bad ideas. Question six, you did answer. Who is going to pay the $36,700 that the JMSL Board has already spent? The answer, the Board would only pay back the $36,700 if the Board would approve a resubmission of the Planning Grant. If the Board does not approve the resubmission, then the district would not have to pay back any funds. But we cannot pursue any further school funding for the project. Another thing to note, if the Charter School Planning was resubmitted in April 2014, there is no guarantee this Governance Board would secure a grant, because other school districts would be submitting Planning Grants for the years 2014 and '15. Barb, you want to put that one... No, that This information I got was from Stanford University located in California. They did a study on charter schools, and they looked at 16 states. This is more current. But in June 2009 report, while the report recognized a robust national demand for more charter schools from parents and local communities, it found that 17% of the charter schools reported academic gains that were significantly better than traditional public schools. While 37% of the charter schools showed gains that were worse than their traditional public school counterparts, with 46% of the charter schools demonstrating no significant difference. And then the one up here is from 2013 from Stanford, just showing you the numbers. I do agree with Ree. Charter schools usually come into a district when the school district is underperforming. Our school district is not underperforming. All our student, all of our school employees work hard to make this a high-achieving district. If we accept Option Two, the taxpayers would have to pay back the $36,700. And when this Planning Grant is resubmitted in April 2014, there are no guarantees. Another thing to note, we would be competitively competing with other schools submitting Planning Grants for the 2014-2015 school year with no guarantees of securing another grant. The other disadvantage the 2014 and '15 Planning Grants awards, the money is less than the current allocation, a decrease of $75,000. Now, using the information that was presented earlier, based on this information, if we were to get this resubmitted Planning Grant, we went down from 225,000 to $150,000. And then using that 85% rule that the Governance Board mentioned in the past presentation, the second-year dollars would be $127,500. The third-year grant dollars would be $127,500. Year four, the grant money, using the earlier presentation numbers, the grant dollars would drop down to $70,890, and year five, $70,890. The total dollars, if we would be lucky enough to get this new grant, would be $546,780. That's down from $820,000. That's $273,220, or 33% reduction. Plus, we got to pay back the $36,700, which I didn't talk about in those numbers. Opening Jackson School with the numbers and dollars say no is a bad idea. And again, I cannot support authorizing JMSL Governance Board to resubmit the 2013-2014 Planning Grant to Wisconsin DPI. I know you guys did a lot of work, but the numbers say to me, don't do it. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question for the presenters, if I could.
Sure.
Have you considered, or is there a possibility of actually using the EL program in one of the entire junior high schools, either PJs or Ben?
Part of an Expeditionary Learning School is you don't necessarily have bells. If you saw how the kids were working on projects, and it's not necessarily broken up into 46-minute components of English Social Studies. It's, as you saw, they put a lot of time and energy in the tech ed component, and then they broke off into the other various projects. So it might be, it might be difficult.
I know to do both, but I'm saying, like they did in Maine, they converted the whole school, right? Have you considered that? Because, and I agree with Kim, that I think it's, it is a great idea, and I would love to see it through the entire school district. I mean, this is the first really major change in the way we are trying to educate our students. And I'm just excited. I'm looking for opportunities on how we can bring that in. And a lot of the points, you know, are good points.
I think one thing to think about, Jeff, is that our Planning Grant dictated a little bit of how we went about planning for this particular middle school phase, but we've never left sight of the idea that Expeditionary Learning is really not only worth looking at for Jackson Middle School, but that it could have a significant impact on the future of what the Stevens Point School District looks like. It's just that, for the purposes of our planning and planning within the grant that we received, it, it was, the way in which we, we went forward with it was to look at that smaller school, scale school, which was accommodated really well within Jackson Middle School. So I don't know if that helps answer that question of why we didn't look at it on a really big scale all at once. Sometimes it's best, too, to take your planning in a small way and make sure that you do it right and do it really well for students, and then move it forward. And that's our hope.
And I, and I don't disagree with that. I understand that, because it is, it's a dramatic change. I mean, it's a big change. And to try and do that on a bigger scale, I think, would be rather risky. So I do appreciate that. But I'm just wondering, beyond that, if we only look at Jackson School as, as the end, I mean, that's it, and you're not going to take this program and actually try and incorporate it in your entire school district, you know, I would like to see that as part of the long-range planning, because then I think that that has value that goes way beyond Jackson School. And like Bob just showed, we have capacity, and it'd be really great where, you know, after five years, and you have people trained, and you have data that supports the process or the, the, the learning environment, you know, to be able to move it back to our public schools.
It's hard not to get enthusiastic about it when you see the results.
Marathon did a total school conversion, and Mia was involved in that. There are roughly 180 students.
Yeah. So when Marathon went through the conversion, we actually took the entire middle school and wrote the Charter School Grant to fund strictly the professional development. So Marathon does not have the robust budget that a public school would like to have. And in order for us to do the type of professional development for our staff, we needed to do a Charter School conversion. And over the three years that we were able to fund PD, we were able to plan the types of expeditions that you saw before. And to take that model into a large scale like a PJ or like a Ben, it would take an incredible amount of time. And if we have a capacity at Jackson to begin to create the expertise within the district already, in the long run, and thinking long-range planning, you would have your experts to begin working with your other schools as well. So, and kind of looking at Jackson as being a lab school, not only for Stevens Point to be bringing students in and learning what EL is like, it's also creating experts to then kind of grow your own teachers within your district. So that was part of Jackson idea to begin with.
Mia, how big is King Middle School, do you know?
King is, I want to say between 400 and 500 students.
So it's, it's significantly less than ours.
Right.
What is the largest middle school that EL has been put in, in the States? Do you know?
What's interesting is with the I-3 Grant, we are moving into New York City. We are moving into Boston. We will be working with urban schools that will be larger than what we have here in Stevens Point. Currently, we have middle schools both in New York and really across all of the, the larger urban areas across the country. So it does happen.
But do you know what the largest current middle school is in the country that has incorporated EL as a school?
Largest? No. No. But there are schools comparable and even larger than PJ and Ben. So it does work. I mean...
And do you know if they started out as an all-school, or did they start out as pilot, for example, a school within a school, and then move it out?
What some districts will do is actually, they'll take two steps. They can either create teams within a larger middle school, where if you have three sixth-grade teams, one of the teams might be an EL team. There are also schools that will go grade by grade by grade and begin implementation. So one of the schools that I'm currently working with, their middle school is an entire EL school. They saw the model working, and now they're moving into their elementary school as well. So it's another way of actually implementing the model on a smaller scale, either by grade or by teams at that point, too. The issue that happens, then, is once you see a team functioning highly and implementing expeditions in this type of work, it becomes incredibly competitive, both for the professional development for the staff, and also for parents wanting their kids to be, like, on that team or within that grade level. And there's a push for it to spread throughout your building, then. It's a good push. But we've, I've seen that happen as well in schools.
Mia, just refresh my memory. If, if you tried to, if we chose a school and you wanted to open it next fall, you have six intensive months of planning and professional development training. How do students, if you take all of the teachers and their planning and getting professional development and creating their, their expeditions, how do the students get taught during that six-month period?
So are you, are you talking as if we open Jackson next?
No.
Or just...
No, to play off of Jeff's comment about implementing it in one of our schools today.
Mm-hmm.
You know, how do you close down a school for six months while that staff is being trained and creating expeditions?
So what would happen is, we have really a scope and sequence of professional development. So one of the key components in creating a successful school is really looking at building your, your character and your culture of your students and your staff. We would begin with looking at student-engaged assessment practices, which is telling kids from the beginning what it is that they're, they're going to be learning, and then how do we teach kids to reflect on that. So from my standpoint, I would look at the staff capacity and what they already know, and then build from that what we as ELC is being the most important, high-priority pieces in being successful. So it's, it's kind of like a differentiated approach to professional development. Yes, we would be using in-service time. I'm not sure what that looks like in Stevens Point. There would be opportunities for staff to be out of classrooms, but it wouldn't be something out of the ordinary when you're beginning to do this type of training.
Thank you. Other comments? If not, there is a motion and a second, and voting yes essentially puts, says goodbye to the EL concept. Is that right? Everybody understands that? All right. Barb, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Shibley?
No.
Ms. Shurek?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
No.
Ms. Faxon?
No.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
No.
Mr. Rothman?
No.
Motion fails.
Is there a motion to approve Option Two, to delay the opening until the first semester of 2015-16, of the 2015-16 school year, and then we'll be approving the resubmission of the Charter School Planning Grant in the spring?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or questions? Lisa, I think you were first.
With the motion the way it was made, it's implying that we are going to say yes to the contract in December of 2014, where I think it needs to read that it will come to the Board for yea or nay. But the way it was made, it's, you know, we are approving it then, and I don't believe that's what the intent is. But I didn't make the motion.
Well, with, what we, I think what we just moved in second, it said nothing about approving the contract in December of 2014.
They stopped here.
It says, yes.
No, he didn't say that.
They didn't say, they stopped right there.
Right, but what you did say was approve the resubmission of the Charter Planning School Grant in April, which Lisa's correct. That motion would mean that you're now approving the grant prior to it coming to the Board.
Right. And I don't think that's the intent.
Is that what you wanted to say?
This was meant more as a timeline, to give you a timeline of what would happen if you would pay the money back, resubmit the grant, and then next December, or maybe end of November, be looking at the contract. But you would have to, the Board would have to take separate action on both the Planning Grant, the new revised Planning Grant for this next year, as well as the contract when it would come before the Board.
But you don't need approval of the Board tonight to resubmit the grant to the Board in April, nor to resubmit the contract.
You're right. I think it was more of a clarity issue to give the Board an idea of the timeline that JMSL would be looking at to ensure that we would be able to open in the fall of 2015, if that's the intent of the Board.
I think it'd be better to reword it.
So, yeah, can I amend the motion, or should I just pull that back and...
Was it seconded?
We can...
It was moved in second.
The person will need to withdraw the second so that you can...
I withdraw the second.
Okay. And then I withdraw my motion.
Excuse me, before you make a motion, can I ask a question? Are they asking, are you asking for permission to resubmit the Planning Grant?
Well, I think indirectly we are, but it has to come in front of the Board.
I just want to make sure the wording in this motion is right.
I think we were trying to make sure that it was clear that in, in paying that back, you're, ultimately, it should have said, "Resubmit the Planning Grant to the Board" for approval.
But you don't need permission to do that.
No.
What you need authorization is, is to repay the funds to DPI.
Can I just make a comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, in order to reapply.
Renee?
I just wanted to make a comment. I mean, I'm totally on board for the, this kind of learning. And when I heard Bob's comments tonight and just some of the questions with the studies, the task forces that are coming forward, you know, I fully support this. And I had called Connie Nigard and chatted with her about this. One of the things is with it, I mean, I love Jackson and I'd love to see it open for this. But if I had to choose Jackson or no expeditionary learning, I'd choose expeditionary learning. So I'm wondering, you know, if you say JL, you know, the way you have it worded, it says Jackson, but if you apply for a planning grant, you could actually look at other options too. I would just hate to see it go through what we've been going through. I think it's so important to get the expeditionary learning program up and running. I'd love to see it at Jackson, so I in no way want to say I'm not supporting that, but I just wonder if we need to think out of the box and not tie ourselves to that. I don't know. I just think it's so important to go forward with the type of learning and I do like the location, but I'm just wondering if that boxes you in and then we're back here in April and then we're still having the same debate and Bob's presenting more information. So a planning grant's a planning grant. So I'd love to have it be Jackson. I would support that, but I'm wondering if you really want to lock yourself into that and we keep fighting about this issue versus where you want to do an EL school and the location, that's why you have planning grant. So I, you know, I don't know if you want to address that or if you're willing to open it up a little. I just can see that being a real stumbling block and I would hate to have a stumbling block because I really want to see EL learning in our district.
Site does not have to be determined in a planning grant. In fact, in many cases, that is part of the planning.
Yeah.
So, you know, you can, you could remove the site as a condition of that. We, when we submitted the planning grant that you approved a year ago.
I know, and I, and I loved it and I supported it, but.
But you didn't have a site designated.
Right, but when you have the Jackson, when you have the JM, I mean, that just brings with it and I don't think the task forces will be done in April. So I just don't want to have the same discussion with, but I really want EL in our district. So, and I had talked to you Connie about that, you know, do you think about putting it different places? Not that I want to do that, but I'm just trying to figure out a way to make it happen. So I don't know if you want to include that in your, where you go forward with the grant. I'm, I'm just trying to find a way that we can all come to consensus and that we could all support it is all I'm looking for.
Would it work to have this recommended, the recommendation as written here without the and approved JMSEL district contract in December? If we just got rid of that last line on, that won't work?
No, because you still have the approve, approve the resubmission.
Submission, right.
So if I could suggest something, some wording, Jeff?
No, I'm fine with that.
Motion to approve the repayment of planning grant funds that have been expended to date because they said it's approximately $36,700, so you need to, okay? So motion to approve the repayment of planning grant funds expended to date to the DPI in order to resubmit a planning grant to the board for its approval in April 2014. Does that work?
Probably should be March.
I was just going to say, March is probably better because you will need to have it submitted by April 14th.
It'll need to be in their hands by April 15th.
So why don't we just eliminate and just say, we're gonna, you guys repay the grant and then you guys do the resubmitting. You know, we're not going to tell you when.
It'll come to you at a board meeting.
Right, exactly.
Resubmitted to the board and just get rid of the April.
Soon, or just let them do it.
We'll be back soon.
In the spring.
Barb, did you get that?
Or do you want me to stop?
I can, I can repeat it for you.
I think I have it. To approve the repayment of planning grant funds that have been expended to date to the DPI in order to resubmit, or you want that to stop at that point?
Resubmit a planning grant to the board.
Right.
Okay. I have resubmit a planning grant to the board for its approval in April 2014.
I would say, I would say EL planning grant, just to be clear.
And then take out the reference to April 2014.
Right.
Gotcha.
Is there a second?
I was just going to ask one more time, just to read what you have.
Sure.
I've been burned before.
To approve the repayment of planning grant funds that have been expended to date to the DPI in order to resubmit an EL planning grant to the board for its approval.
Yes, so moved.
Second. Discussion. Bob?
Okay, I spoke with Valerie Smith, the head of Wisconsin DPI for charter schools. And again, she confirmed that we're going to have to pay back $36,700 if we resubmit. But she also did mention, we have 18-month planning grant that we could write up to the DPI and request a waiver for an additional six months. I also, if this, I don't know, if the administration truly believes we need this charter school, realizing it will cost four to six million dollars to sustain this school if we open it up in Jackson, and I'm sure that's coming back to the board in December, then go to referendum, let the taxpayers decide if they want to spend four to six million dollars to open Jackson's school. I spoke with Shirley, Portage County Clerk. She said if we wanted to go have a referendum placed on the primary that will be held August 12th, we would need all the paperwork submitted to our board clerk by June 3rd, 2014, and then this paperwork, paperwork would all have to be completed and in the hands of the Portage County Clerk by June 4th, 2014 to be on the August 12th primary. The other option would be, we could submit paperwork for a referendum. Again, it would have to be in the hands of our clerk by August 26th and then in the hands of the Portage County Clerk by August 27, 2014 for November elections. If we're going to be spending four to six million dollars at a taxpayer's money, it's a big decision. We should go to referendum and let the people decide once and for all if they want to open Jackson.
Lisa?
I agree with Bob. I think this is a large enough investment that we have all these capital projects out there and, and the whole purpose of, of the legislative changing things with our caps and stuff is so that the, the communities have more control of these things. So I concur, I, I think it needs to go to the people.
Kim, did I see a hand?
Yes, I would like to see it opened up too. You know, you said the, the King Middle School is about 400. I, I would like to see if depending on our task force, which I know, again, this is a planning grant that you guys are doing, if you can look at it and maybe somehow take our seventh and eighth graders into one building and do it in all there, not creating another school, not creating another cost if we don't need it and just do it in the seventh and eighth graders in one school. That's what I would love to see, so.
Other comments from the board? Barb, we have a motion in a second. Do people need it read back? If not, roll call vote please.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shibley?
Yes.
Ms. Shurek?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
No.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
No.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving out of the superintendent's report, Kim, did you wish to speak to the Plover Whiting update or Plover Whiting addition?
After the fact. Yeah, just after the fact.
So the board has in front of it some of the items. I, I don't want to go through all of the Plover Whiting items other than you see there that we've moved partially into the facility. There's still some work that needs to be done and that, that will be done. And there was a question asked by email by, by Lisa and I'm responding to it here under B9. The new addition has a sprinkler system in it and the question that Lisa asked was about the timing of the sprinkling system in the old part of the building. We're checking with the architect to ensure that the original timeline for the remainder of the building to install a sprinkler system is during the summer. So we're checking with the architect to be sure that that's still, still what's going to happen. I believe that was, at least the way I interpreted the question. So I, I don't know if, if you want me to finish this and then have Kim respond or you want me to?
On Plover Whiting?
Yep.
No, finish what you have with Plover Whiting.
I'm done.
And then, Kim, okay. Kim?
Basically, I mean, you probably know I went over to Plover Whiting today just to kind of check it out. I took a contractor with me, one that spoke here, and, and looked at the project with me because I will honestly say that's my, not my expertise to see where it's done and where it's going. Talking to Mr. Kaufman, I believe we agreed that the deadline for this project was January 30th. Can you confirm that? I believe it was January 30th.
Well, Tom, do you know?
It was February 3rd. And I granted a one week extension to today for substantial completion. Because of the four days that we lost school during cold weather, they suffered some delays as well, so I felt it was appropriate to give similar charge to them. They are substantially complete today and we're occupying a good portion of the facility and they, Mr. Kaufman and, and teachers are moving in material and storage and they've occupied one class that's been occupied for over a week now and they are free to occupy the other classes. They're choosing to phase in the movement a little bit on their own note. And we still have some, a few minor things to clean up. There's some chemistry that's, has to be installed that's still being constructed at the manufacturer but doesn't produce from using the room in the interim, but Mr. Kaufman's working with the staff to raise movement.
The staff was very excited about the new buildings, which I, you know, anybody would when they're, when you got a new place to go into and it's, and it's very beautiful. I guess my few ca, and questions, and I apologize, I didn't get these to you sooner, but I didn't get done there until about three o'clock-ish. Do you know what we have in the cost so far in this project, what we've spent? And if you can't give it to me today, I'm hoping we can get it within the next couple days. Also, is there any verbiage? I know you okayed the extension. Is that something that should have came back to the board for the extension and is there any verbiage in their contract that if they fall short of their timeline or deadline, do we get any, and this is not a lawyer language, but any kickback? Do we, they have any penalty? I've seen it where before, they don't have it done by the deadline, you get a thousand dollars back for every week. I don't know if it's in there. I know I have the contract, but if you could get that to me.
I can do the answer. I don't know.
Go ahead.
It was, I believe it was $225 a day for each day. They did not complete substantial completion.
Tom, do we know what we expended to date?
As referenced to that first part, we do not know the precise numbers because the bills in there are still coming in. The estimate is though they were under budget.
Great, so $225 a day if they did not hit the deadline.
If they did not hit the deadline of substantial completion, which is today.
What's substantial to you?
They occupy the rooms, it's a substantially complete and they have met that.
Okay. And do we know what type of warranties that we have with Ellis Stone? Did we get any warranties on their workmanship?
I don't have that answer off the top of my head typically there is yes, but I don't.
Okay, if, if you can get that or someone could get that to me, that would be great. So again, a beautiful place. I know the teachers are very excited about it. Like you said, the, the learning, the, the reading teachers were in working, we couldn't go and visit those. What I had found out too is the sprinkler system's in that new place is not working, will not be working until the old unit gets hooked in and then it'll all be put together. And basically, most of the other stuff, information is, you know, is right here in his superintendent report, so. So, and I apologize, I'm just going to go back. So you extended them a week? Well, you, you already said that you feel that they have the substantial work done, so kind of a, thank you.
All right, thanks, Kim. Reed, you wish to speak before, on the Life Skills Center?
I like that substantial completion, boy. There's a way out on that one. For a million dollars, you got four dinky little classrooms. You think that was a great idea?
Reed, excuse me, but I believe you signed up to speak to the Life Skills Center?
Oh, yeah, I forgot. The Life Skills Center, there's a dandy one. You know, I tried, I tried to get you something that really helped the handicapped, okay? But the superintendent of schools wanted to take $400,000 you got from welfare, whatever, you know, fun that, they didn't spend and they got a fund given back to them and now he wanted to go out and build a new building. He didn't know that they had that building on Second Street, they just needed a little place, but nobody had to go out and build this, this building. Okay, so they convinced the mayor, he probably did, that, okay, you know, you somehow you construed the law that you're within 400 feet of a bar, five, 300 feet of a bar, if you take some long circuitive route to them, fine, you know? I'll bet you someday that'll come back to haunt superintendent of school and I hope they sue the school, district up the wazoo when it happens. But here, here you got your building now. You had to, he had to make it smaller from 4,500 square foot to 3,000 square foot, okay? So you got your permission to put it there. And here's what you've got now. You went out and promised the whole, the world everything to get this through. It was a community center, a chef's school, you know, you name it, this was going to be it, you know? When I was saying, hey, can't, even Mrs. Iverson with this handicapped child said, hey, I said, geez, we could have, it'd be nice to have a canopy out in front like, like they have in buildings, you know, so the kids could get unloaded. There ain't no room for that, no money for that. But yeah, well, no, but you got what you got now. You're building it right on the site of, of the drainage there. Nobody asked any questions about that. You never asked any questions, what's going to cost to run a sewer there, blast it through solid rock. Okay, just let her fly, no cost. So you got this 3,000 square foot building that I don't think's going to work out because you, oh, he wanted to have this private little spot for these kids. It's not going to be private, whether chef's school, alternative school, community center. But the other issue is, and the school and, and the city plant commission told you, you have to have an institutional look on that baby. You were trying to convince them, ah, but it's not out in front, it's not out in front of the school, it's not goes to this, not out in front of the school, come on. Right there in the most prominent spot on that campus there, right 25 foot from the, from the road where all of these people are coming into games to see this building. It's going to have to have an institutional look and that isn't very hard to come up with. Like I said, this building is exact replica of Ben Franklin. And if you don't make that thing look like something, you better have your names all over that thing because you're responsible for the way that thing's going to look. So I suggest to you that you guys get involved and you make it look like something. So it's not an embarrassment to the school district to have something built out of T-111 or something like that, which, which he was planning on doing. I don't know what, what, what you people are thinking. You don't get involved in anything. You don't think on these matters. You didn't, you know, this, this Plover Whiting school, so let's get with it. You could still kill this thing, it's still got to come, it's, you could bring it back to the board and say, hey, what's this thing going to cost? I think this thing is too expensive where it is and let's put it someplace where it actually makes some sense here. And we can put a canopy out, we can actually help the handicapped, the 12 or 14, 15 that you have. And don't make it a chef's school, you can do that inside your school. What do you even have to do that for? What I'm saying is you can still do something here because he's got to bring that back and he's also going to have to have the dumpster enclosed, which will, which will cause you to have a driveway up there, which is going to start costing you. You better get some cost because he said it's only going to cost, he keeps adding it up, you know? It's like this substantially completed, you know, it'll start 425, then 450 and then it'll be 500 and 600. You guys get involved in this thing and it better function like it, like it's supposed to if it's there and you better have your names on it if it doesn't look good. But you can get involved if you're really concerned as a school board about the handicapped and you're really concerned about the expeditionary, all of these things. Get involved and you guys start doing something. Hello? Please surprise me and surprise the public once and start doing stuff that makes sense and start asking some questions. Start looking at that site, they got snow piled up.
Thank you, sir.
Mile high there. Mile high there.
Charlie, you want to?
Yeah, the district continues to work with the city planning.
I had a question on the Life Skill, if I could ask.
Okay.
On a Life Skill, are they going to put in a commercial kitchen or a standard kitchen?
Craig?
It'll be some sort of hybrid. It's not going to be a commercial kitchen by any stretch. It'll be something probably along the lines of more than what we have in our current family and consumer science classes. However, it'll be, you know, something less than what you would find in, you know, a small cafe.
Thank you.
Now, the work continues with the city planning department to work on the facade questions that arose during the planning commission and the city council. And there's a meeting scheduled with district staff and Samuel's group this week to address that issue.
Can I ask a question then, before we leave the Life Skills Center? Do we have any idea of what the cost change is going to be, the additional cost for that?
For which?
For the facade, for change.
No, that's something that we're working on, and I think you or somebody asked a question about wastewater and all that. Those are still being investigated as well.
So, will this be coming back to the board with the additional costs or changes?
Is Tom still there?
I mean, Mike, I mean, if we're waiting, can we have it come back with all the changes and all the updates? That would really be awesome that we're kind of following this along. I mean, if there's massive change, 100,000, how many feet are we changing this to? Excuse me, not 100,000, but quite a footage that we're changing it to, so.
I would think the board would want to be apprised of.
Yeah, apprised of it. Tom, the question is, is do we know how much, any additional cost might be to resolve the facade issues?
No, we haven't met with the city yet.
Okay.
We're putting together plans to talk to them about.
And if that amount is over what the board has initially approved, that would come back to the board for approval then?
Certainly, we have to figure out how to fund it.
Right. And if it were not over that, we would certainly come back and apprise the board of how we resolve the issue with the city planning department.
Sure.
I believe that the facade has to go back to the city council for approval.
Let's go back to the city plan commission, and then from there to the city council.
Right, okay.
So, are we going to, if it's a substantial amount of money, are we, the board, going to approve the increase in the project before it goes back to the city so that we're not caught in a position where the city's going to require a change, we're going to be in the middle of the project, and then we're going to be asked?
We can't start the project until we resolve this. And we would not move on to the project with substantial increase unless we have the funds to fund that. So, we would have to bring it back to the board to determine what your decision is, what you'd want to do. We're trying to put together a plan to keep the cost down, and some of the things that they preliminarily have suggested for the facade just appear to be excessive. It adds nothing to the facility except cost. So, we want to try to deal with that, but I don't want to be critical of it because, you know, we haven't talked, and they may be willing to work with us.
Yeah, so I think the direct answer is that the board has approved a certain amount for the Life Skills Center. If it goes beyond that, we would certainly bring it back. The look of the building has to go back to the plan commission and the city council for their approval, so that the board is going to be apprised of all of those things as the process moves along. But as Tom indicated, we can't do anything until we resolve the facade issue.
Yeah, we're not moving forward with any bids or any construction or anything until we resolve this, because that affects the overall cost of the whole project.
Just to let the board know, and I did in the weekly, that I'll be attending the National Superintendent's Conference on Education this week, Wednesday through Saturday in Nashville. Make-up days for inclement weather, January 6th and 7th. Notification of make-up days for January 6th and 7th, on which all schools were closed for non-exempt employees and year-round exempt employees except administrators, was sent out last week by HR. It should say make-up school time, not make-school time. Make-up school time, that is hours and days for exempt employees, teachers, and administrators and students, is currently under review, and we're working with DPI as well. The official district calendar contains a notation that the first make-up day will be the Monday, April 21st Institute Day, and the second make-up day will be Monday, June 9th. However, we have also drafted several other options in order to avoid using Monday, June 9th, which means bringing everybody back on a weekend for one day. In the interest of involving employees per the staff morale plan and parents, we will be conducting electronic surveys of both groups to help us determine the best way to handle the situation. If we have additional school closing days between now and the end of the year due to inclement weather, then it's reasonable to assume we'll have no choice but to add extra days to the end of the calendar. So, we're going to send out these surveys to parents and staff to find out what their best view is of making up those days. But if we have any additional further days, then we're going to be in a position of having to go beyond June the 9th.
Wouldn't it be easier just to add a few minutes each day to your classes so that you wouldn't have all this, the teachers, it'd be easier for them to make up a few minutes per day than to do what you're proposing about adding full days on at the end of the year?
We did look at that option, Bob. We looked at the option of taking April 21, which is what the calendar says. And then the calendar also says that the second make-up day is June the 9th. That's an official district calendar that was approved by the board. So, we would have to come back to the board to change that. So, one of the options was to take the April 21 Institute Day and then to add six minutes at the end of every day beginning February the 24th. That would get us enough minutes and hours and days to satisfy the DPI requirement, assuming we don't have any more polar vortexes or snow days. But that change would have to come back to the board. So, what we want to do is get from parents and staff how they view that before we bring something back to the board for its approval. But it does have to come back to the board, because on the official district calendar, it has that notation.
So, what's your timeline on that of bringing it back?
Probably the 24th of February. Directors of Elementary Ed and Human Resources search update. The total number of applicants for the elementary ed position is 21. The total number of applicants currently for HR is 10. The first round interviews for elementary ed is February the 19th. And then the first round director of elementary ed interviews has four of those 21 candidates that we vetted, that we thought had the qualifications. And then as soon as the first round is finished, we'll have the second round at cabinet. I do have a list of the board members that were interested in serving on one of those two searches, and we'll have to find a way to select one of those people to serve on that in the next week or so.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve items A, B, C, and E in the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Barb, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Shively? Yes. Ms. Shirick? Yes. Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, then we'll deal separately with the two items that Lisa requested. We vote on separately. The first is the minutes of the February 3rd, 2014 Board meeting. Yes, go.
On page four of seven, under the consent agenda, it was under C, 8C, approval for the recommendations for employment. It was brought up for additional documentation for the pay variance calculations to be provided. And I would like that to be in there so that we get that information. I haven't received it yet, so I would like that added. The other thing is on page five of seven, and six of seven, Ms. Shively is written down as excused, while Ms. Totten and Ms. Shirick are written down as absent. From my perspective, at the time that I left, I was no longer in a position to make good decisions, which is why I'm supposed to be here. And I'm not really sure what your criteria is for the difference, but I think that should be changed, so they are all consistent.
I'll speak to that. Renee had let us know that she, because of health reasons, needed to leave at 10:00. As I recall the situation, although I have not watched or re-watched the tape or the video, you two just got up and said you were leaving, so we had to call it something.
And again, the reason I left is I was at that state where I could no longer, it was too late for me to be making good decisions, and I believe it should be changed to excused.
If that's the wish of the board, to have all three listed as excused, Chris, you?
I truly believe what you're saying. But at any given time, if any board member just decides that they can't make a good decision and walks out, I don't think that's appropriate. And if enough board members do that, we might not have a quorum, and everything might have to stop. So, I'm not saying you should be punished for it, but there is a difference in asking to be excused. There's no reason that a board member could not say, I'm sorry, I need to leave. Nothing was said. You just got up and left. I don't think that's appropriate. I don't think it's a punishment to the way it's written. I don't think it was meant to be that.
Kim?
So, instead of doing the adjourn early or postponing the remaining, we should just ask the board to be excused?
We just need to move on now.
It's a good idea. Move on. All right, we have.
I have a point.
Go ahead.
On page three of seven, it was moved and seconded by Shively, Totten to accept the recommendation for remedy of clear cases. It goes on, I'm not sure why, I don't think that I said, um, let's see, in years of experience then jumped over others. I don't know that I said use the rubric created by, where it's in parentheses, and applied in the 2012-13 school year.
It's exactly.
Was it exactly what I said? Okay.
Thank you for clarifying. I just wanted to ask.
Yeah. I watched the video again. Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure. Because that HR rubric, the board actually never did approve it. It was just implemented without our approval. I didn't even know it was there, so I just want to make sure that if people are, jumped over, so. Okay, I stand corrected. I appreciate the feedback.
All right, can you, Barb, can you go back and share what Lisa's first change was? Because I could not bring up my copy, so I'll actually look for it here.
I didn't get it all either. It was on page four of seven.
Okay.
Eight, consent agenda.
Uh-huh.
There's A, B, and C. Under C, it says that it was moved and seconded to approve it, which included the minutes employment. And we had a discussion, the board did, on the employment recommendation as to the variance in pay between the two hires of the full-time positions. And I wanted it in there that there was going to be given documentation to the board as far as the calculations, how that was calculated. That was going to.
Okay, now, okay, now I remember.
Do you remember what you're talking about?
Yeah, there were two people with about the same percentage FTE, but the amounts, there was a $2,000 or $3,000 difference, something like that. Okay.
Yes.
Got it. Okay. Any other, any other changes to the minute? Barb, roll call vote, please.
We need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion that the minutes are approved with the changes that I submitted.
Second.
Further discussion? Okay. Barb, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Shirick? Yes. Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Rothman?
Yes.
It carries.
Okay, item D, which we pulled out, approval of evaluation instrument for board secretary. Lisa, you would ask that be pulled out?
Oh, yes. The one thing I think needs to be added to this is the understanding of this position, who they report to, that, you know, it could be added to comments or whatever, and I just think that needs to be added, so.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
Is this, is everybody under the impression this is how we're going to employ a secretary from this point on, as just our board secretary? Or is it possible that someone up, someone, like someone who currently holds a position could, at some point, also apply to do this? That would be my question.
I don't understand.
I don't understand your question.
Would someone, from this point on, are we fully expecting to always have a separate board secretary as opposed to a split job like Gwen had?
I'm not, and I thought that that was part of the review process, that we were actually going to review that when it came to a year. And we should have done that in December. And I had emailed Terry about that, about doing an evaluation. You had indicated you had one, but it just didn't get to the board until January. Now, it's February. So, I do fully, I thought we were going to look at it, because Matilla had presented it to the board as a proposal. And then I thought we were going to review it after a year, is what I thought originally. But.
And a couple other things.
Sure.
The group did talk about what would the process be? How would we handle the evaluation? Would the whole board meet with Barb? Or what exactly was the process? We need some type of a process. I'd also like to have something put in there so that the board secretary would have some feedback from us, but also that she could give some feedback also. And maybe that's part of, when we look at the, is this how we want to continue, is just the board secretary or whatever? That could be part of that conversation also.
Can I address that?
Angel, go ahead.
I think all we were trying to do is get the actual instrument created. And Lisa, I remember your question being on there. I didn't know how to pose it in form of an evaluative question, you know, something that you would evaluate the secretary on. I remember wanting it in there, but I didn't know if there would be an opening paragraph, or there would be a conclusion, or if it'd be part of board comments. Do you have a suggestion for how it would be put in there as a part of an evaluation?
Are we talking about the supervisor issue?
Yep.
Is that what we're talking about? Well, I think in this case, because Barb is employed by the board, it's her name, board secretary, and the supervisor becomes the board of education.
But she wants it evaluated, right? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Wants. Oh, okay, got it, sorry.
I mean, I just thought it could be number nine in the first job competencies. I mean, I didn't understand why it couldn't be, so.
Can you put it in the form of a sentence for me? I just don't, I didn't know how to phrase it. We kind of.
Understands who she reports to. Just like assist board members with their duties.
I don't assume she's the board secretary. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
You want to add it there? You fine with that?
Sure. So, that would be number nine. I just want to get this done so we can approve the final.
What, could you repeat it, please?
Yep, under job competencies, number nine would be understands who she reports to. Is that how you phrased it?
He or she, he or she reports to.
Terry, could I ask a question, please?
Chris?
So, Lisa, are you saying, like, to the board president or to the board? Like, if she has questions, she's probably not going to go to the whole board.
Right, right. And that actually is part of it, that I don't think we as a board have made that clear to that position. And I think by having it on here, that gives us more responsibility, should I say, or ownership in making sure that that it's clear.
It's clear in the job description, though. It indicates it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, am I allowed to just ask?
Yes.
Do you guys want that on there?
Yes.
You do want it on there?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know if I like this wording, but I'm-
Change it.
I know, I can't think of it right now, but.
Jeff?
I think one way that you could put it is just read and understands job description, because it's included in there. I mean, that's pretty general, but.
I think it's too general, but if that's-
Understands job description?
Or read it and understands.
Can I ask, just to clarify, and a question to help, how would you know if the person understood who they reported to? How would you evaluate that?
I would evaluate it based, like, all the other things. When I've asked for assistance with various duties, whether or not that individual did it. I mean, it would be no different than any, I'm confused by the question.
Do you know what, Attila, with all due respect, it is the board secretary position. I would appreciate, you know, if we could just discuss it ourselves. I don't mean to be rude or anything, but it is the board-
Oh, I was trying to help the board.
I know you're trying to, but I would just appreciate just letting the board discuss it. Why don't we just leave it, understands, understands and, let's see, understands and follows reporting structure? Is that, is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so number nine would be changed to understands and follows reporting structure.
Yeah.
Okay, otherwise, the evaluation tool is okay? Yes. Terry, Bob has a-
Bob?
What is the reporting structure?
The reporting structure is to the board. That's what it says on the job description.
That's pretty generic. Why don't I just leave it off? There's enough questions?
Well, I think nine for job competencies and public relations and personal skills, that should cover just about everything. We don't need to go into such depth.
Do you know what, someone wants it changed, so what we can do is we can vote on it.
Sounds like a plan to me.
Before we vote, can I just ask you a question?
Yes.
And I guess my thing is a daily type of thing. So something comes to Barb, and she, who does she go to? She's probably not going to go to the whole bar, you know, the whole board at that time. So if issues come up, that's the, that's the protocol thing, I'm saying. But maybe that gets back to what Lisa's question is. The board takes responsibility and identifies for her.
Right.
Okay. Or we can leave it, just understands who she reports to. I mean-
And if she doesn't, it's our responsibility.
I was just trying to get something sense-
Who does she report to? The entire board?
That's the way the job description reads.
Renee, Jeff, who?
Board and its members.
I think she's probably doing that already. We don't need to put another line on here. We do cover it pretty good on job competencies, public relations, personal skills.
Okay. Can I make a motion that we amend this evaluation to include number nine with the understand and follows a reporting structure? Is that what you have, Angel?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Further discussion? Barb, roll call vote, please.
Okay. Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yeah.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
No.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Um, no.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Shurek?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to item nine, second Friday in January, student-
We need to vote on this document, or this is already taken care of, the instrument?
Oh, no, we just voted on the amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There wasn't a motion, so that became the main motion.
That's what I was going to say, that's what I thought it was.
It wasn't made the motion to-
But it said amendment.
No, with that amendment.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, my mistake. That's okay.
Good for clarification.
Yeah.
So, you have approved it? Okay, good. 981, second Friday in January, student enrollment report.
Okay, you can answer questions if you, if you wish. There's not really much to the report. I don't want to take a lot of your time. Basically, the membership declined in second Friday count by 70. As you see in the graph on the page, that's very typical. 55, 59 drop has happened a couple times in the past four years, five years, and it's very normal. Of the 50 membership drop, approximately 70, rather, 50 are due to, we can find probably migrant worker families, because they, of those 70, 50 all moved to Texas, so, in one location, so that's what we kind of figure. So it's a normal look, not particularly, nothing particularly alarming, outstanding, different, or whatever, so.
Any questions on the second Friday in January account?
Question. Tab, what do you look to for the future? Are we going to be fairly stable on our class sizes or total?
Well, anything I say from after this word is speculative. Obviously, I don't have a crystal ball. As you look around at the numbers of the cohort survival ratio and any regression analysis of what already is, there's no significant trending upward or downward. It's pretty flat. All the children who are going to attend our schools in the next five years are already born, and really, I don't see any significant changes in enrollment in our district unless something happens external. In other words, something in the community happens where a lot of people move in, stimulus to move people in with families or cause them to leave. So notwithstanding that trend, probably be somewhat flat with a slight increase perhaps. Our growth seems to be in the southern part of the district.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks, Tab.
You're welcome.
Rentala Jackson Elementary Portables by Farm Shed, I think that's you two?
Yes, it's a, it's a $200 contract.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Farm Shed just asked to utilize the portables at Jackson so they could get a start on the seedlings. They want to use it for the balance of this month and through April, and then they're out. And it's a very minor, small amount of contract, but we have a certificate of insurance from them so that they're covered with liability, property damage, and things like that, so.
And the $200 essentially covers utilities?
Electricity, yeah.
Questions? Jeff, you had a hand up?
What's the flooring in those modules?
Carpet.
Okay, they're going to be growing plants, and we have a carpet?
They put them on tables. They just, the seedling, they just set them on a table, put the tables out, cover it, and put it on, and they'll clean up when they're done. I don't think they're going to be shoveling dirt in there. I think it's a controlled environment type thing.
Lisa?
Plants, what about the moisture control? I mean, I'm all for, I love the program. I just want to make sure we have the whole moisture thing under control. Is that going to be an issue in those rooms?
I wouldn't think so. It's, they, whether the seedlings live or die is not our issue, I guess.
Well, but the mold in our walls-
Oh, I don't think, they're not going to be talking a lot, the amount of water, no. We wouldn't let them stay in if that was a problem. They're responsible for any damage to the facility, et cetera, so.
Have they used our facility before, Tab?
No, not to my knowledge.
Right.
Had they used some of it, well, when they had that other grant, they used the gym area to do some. That was a different, that was a different grant.
That was a different grant.
Kim, you had your hand up.
Do we heat these modules now?
I beg your pardon?
Do we heat them now?
Yes.
I mean, because I do seedlings, and you have to keep it at such a temperature with special lightings that I'm just wondering, I mean, again, great project, don't get me wrong, great project. I'm more curious of what happens to the seedlings after they get started and what they're doing with them afterwards, but I will ask that to the Central Rivers Farm Shed. But I'm just wondering if $200, with our temperatures the way they are, can we heat it and put electricity in there? Because I know what the price of gas and oil is now.
We're just heating it at the same temperature we're continuing to heat it at.
It'd go up.
They don't need any additional-
They don't need any additional heat.
They have lights that they put on those plants individually.
But if it's zero degrees outside, you're going to have to heat that somewhat. I mean, are you heating it to 52, 55?
It's down here, I don't know, or did he leave a?
I mean, because seedlings-
I don't know the temperature it's at.
Okay.
They're heating the building to 45 degrees. They put electronic heat pads underneath the seedlings. So all we need for them is electricity. We verified we have enough circuits in there.
Okay. Did you happen to ask where the seedlings go afterwards? Just, I'm just curious. I mean, does it go out to the public?
Heat through their greenhouse, where they finish them.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the attached agreement between the district and Central Waters Farm Shed, Inc., for the purpose of Jackson Elementary School.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Barb, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Shurek?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Rothman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item 9C, the Carlson Detman Administrative Compensation Report, scope of work proposal.
As noted in the, in the memo, the board asked us to provide the following: copies of the current professional service agreements that the district has with Carlson Detman, which is attached, a proposal for the scope of work and costs for an administrative compensation report, and as I've noted below, that's already included in the original, the original agreement, a current administrative salary bands, which I provided you several documents relative to the board approval of that, and then several board members requested information concerning the selection process for identifying members of the initial teacher pay plan work group. So, number one, and two, the three PSAs include non-exempt, exempt faculty and administration, and then faculty and administration focusing on focus groups and designing an equitable pay plan structure. As a result, there's no additional PSA that's necessary for the administrative compensation. Also, we attached the administrative compensation salary bands, January 30th, 2012 memo to the board, along with the minutes. That was approved 8-0. The December 10th, 2012 memo to the board, along with the minutes, and that motion was approved 9-0. And then a separate sheet just with the salary bands, without the bolds and with notations. And I did think it was important to note that the statement that was made, administrators had given us their pay grades, and we had no input, and they decided their own ranges, is simply not true. The materials that I have attached show that the board was fully engaged in determining those ranges, and was provided a rationale for same, and that over three months in closed session, we provided a great deal of information, which I did not attach here, and each time was given a rationale for the basis for the salary band ranges, and then the votes were 9-0 and then 8-0. I apologize, I indicated 9-0 both times. The initial selection of the teacher pay plan group was that the superintendent recommended that five administrators be on the group. The list is there. The teachers were identified by cabinet and principals. Keith Williams, our former HR director, had a discussion with Pat Leahy, co-president of SPAEA. Pat then identified five or six individuals from the SPAEA, and Keith brought those names forward to cabinet and selected Pat Leahy and Mike Kurtz, a current Spash math teacher. Bill Carlson then had a discussion with elementary principals and asked that they each identify two teachers from each of their buildings who met the following criteria: experienced, open-minded, problem-solvers, communicators, and can hold their own in a group and do not have an agenda. The principals then rank ordered eight teachers who met the criteria, and the first two teachers on the list were asked to join the group. Keith then approached Greg Neen, Director of Student Services, and asked him to identify a special education teacher to be a part of the group. He identified two individuals, and the first one on the list was asked and accepted. The selection process also looked for individuals who could dedicate the time needed to work collaboratively with the administration and Charlie on this project. We will utilize the same processes above to identify the five additional teachers approved by the board, and for the non-exempt pay plan group, we'll identify one employee from each of the groups to meet the board-established number of six: clerical, custodial maintenance, educational assistance, food service support services, and transportation. Three administrators, managers, and our supervisors will be identified by the administration to complete the non-exempt group. And finally, Charlie Carlson, when I spoke with him at length, asked that I provide the following information to you: the work will commence when the groups are appointed. The decisions to change the consulting framework by expanding the teacher work group and add groups for the other two plans will extend the timeframe. We certainly are ready and willing to report this approach, but it is a course alteration that must be managed correctly accordingly. We will work out a schedule of meetings with the district to which all of the people can commit. We'll start with the organizational sessions with each group, and we're holding February 26th open for that purpose. And the delays in getting this process moving, we'll move the delivery date out for the teacher group at least. Once the groups are formed, the delivery date will be determined. So I'm assuming that by February the 24th, Charlie will have some idea about the dates that the information will be delivered.
Okay, and there's no action required?
No, the board took action earlier, expanding the groups.
Okay. Questions? Kim?
I guess, basically, I just got to comment. The narrative on the bottom of the first page, to me, it's unacceptable. He's going to use one, he's got to use the other stuff that was talked about, mainly, basically, maybe such as that I really believe that the administrator was part of the group, and I was told by, I believe the president and Attila, that it was not. So if you're going to use one, you need to use more of them.
I don't understand what you just said, Kim, I'm sorry.
Well, the adminis-, the bottom paragraph on this is unacceptable. It wasn't needed to be put on here to get your point across of the information that was needed.
Well, in my opinion, it was needed because the public, without, without factual information, the public was led to believe that the administrators determined their own salary band ranges, and that's not true.
Well, they were also led to believe, too, that that night, that the administration wasn't part of that group, and none of that discussion was here. But again, just my comment.
Just, just to clarify, I would agree with Kim. I just don't need to think we need to put individual board members' names on there. We all make a lot of questions and things, so in the future, I would ask that you don't call out individual board members. I don't think it sets the tone for our meetings or for the information. So I would concur with that. And then my question is, so with the administrative group, and I'm sorry, I maybe am being really thick about this, but were we supposed, we tabled the salary ranges last meeting, correct? So we didn't vote on the administrative salary ranges?
The board has approved the salary band ranges twice, and those are currently in place. The administrative compensation review is part of the professional services agreement that Charlie is doing, so he will come back to the board.
That's what I thought, so. But you had asked us last meeting to approve them.
No, I did not. I did not ask that the salary band ranges be approved. Those have been approved twice.
I thought it was on the, I'll have to go back and check, but that's okay.
Okay.
Thank you. So it's informational, we can-
Any further comments on the administrative compensation report scope of work? Okay. Moving on to item D, the second reading of policies. We have 230 and 672, both of which were worked on last week. Is there a motion to approve second reading?
Some of-
Policies. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. Jeff, can you go first?
Go ahead.
Sure, okay. And I apologize for not staying again. I was not in, it was too late. Anyways, on the first page for the district leadership team and cabinet, I'm not understanding why we're adding just, if we're going to add people to cabinet, then I'm curious as to why we're not also adding the director of transportation, our food service, all our other managers and principals, and I don't understand the logic behind just adding one. If, you know, I don't actually understand why we need to add any more to cabinet, but if we're going to add the one, why aren't we adding more?
Can I answer?
Sure.
The board approved adding the director of technology as a cabinet-level position last spring.
Okay.
Cabinet is made up of a certain number of people, directors, and they have the managers and supervisors, psychologists, principals, under their direction. So cabinet is one group of people that's made up of those six or seven individuals. There's no, the leadership team is a much larger group that's made up of all administrators.
Okay.
So we are updating a policy that we had not seen in several years to incorporate the director of technology. the Director of Technology and a clarification of a title. So, any further questions?
Just a comment on this one, and then I want to talk about the other policy. I'm going to repeat what I said. I know three of you are not here. I'm not in support of this. We have the Cabinet members and their titles selected for a reason. They hold certain certifications, and for those certifications, we compensate them for that position. They are part of our, or should be, part of our succession plan. If something unfortunate happens to our leadership, they kind of go down the row, so to speak, of those positions. If those individuals don't hold those certain certifications, then I think it puts our District in jeopardy, so we need to hold the line as far as that policy goes. The other policy as far as the purchasing?
What do you mean by that? I don't know what you mean, because I wasn't here, so. What do you mean by the titles? What are you, for compensation?
Well, we have these positions defined that we feel that they're important to be a part of the Cabinet. So, to be Director of Business Services, you have to have certain certifications. To be Director of Student Services as part of their job description, they have to have certain certifications. Director of Elementary Education, they have to have certain certifications held within the state. Essentially, what we're doing is, by approving this new policy, is saying, yeah, well, if we don't have somebody and we need to do an interim, we're going to, and for the lack of better terms, we're going to accept somebody who is not as qualified to hold that, or doesn't hold the qualifications for that position that we defined in a description of that position.
Well, actually, I think that what it does, it does two things. It gives us flexibility in the event that we can't find somebody who we believe is as qualified, and actually, it maintains a standard. It doesn't lower standards. What it does is, it says, we can't find the individual that exactly meets it, so as an interim, we do need somebody in that position, and so, in, for example, this year, we picked a very, very qualified individual and changed the title to reflect the fact that he didn't have that correct certification. It actually maintained the standard. It said, we are not just going to hire somebody because they have the qualification. And it also gives us flexibility. Currently, and I've done this twice now in less than four years, I've held now two Cabinet-level positions while being Superintendent. And I'm willing to do that because I don't want to just settle. Fortunately, this year, Bill Carlson was available to be the lead elementary principal and has done an exceptional job in that position. So, I do understand your objection to it, Jeff. I just want to make sure that the Board knows that this gives me and the District flexibility, and secondly, it sends a pretty strong message that we're not going to just settle for somebody who has qualifications, but who really does have a standard that we're looking for.
Chris, you had a, you had your end up, or no?
Um, no, I'll pass.
Renee, were you?
No, the way the policy reads, though, they're still recommended to the Board. The Board still approves whether or not they choose to do that. It's not removing the responsibility from the Board, if I read it correctly.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Then, let's move on to purchasing and procurement. Jeff, you had?
I did.
There's a motion. Just for 230, right? Was that?
It was for both.
No, I think the motion was for both.
I did for both, yeah.
Given the lateness of the hour, I know when we reviewed this, there was one question that I thought of after leaving the meeting that is a concern, is that we don't define as far as, and let me just kind of play out a scenario here. If you have a contract that potentially, let's say it's $3,000 a year for the contract, or, let's pick an easy number, $5,000. And if it is a four-year contract, then the Superintendent can approve that contract without any Board approval because it is within his $20,000 purview. There's nothing in here that says as far as the Board having the authority addressing the issue of, my concern is duration of contracts. That anything over one year, I think the Board needs to look at, even though it may be within the Superintendent's purview of $20,000, because there may be contracts that we don't want to extend four or five years for something. I mean, this is a silly example, but, you know, what if we thought buggy whips were a good thing and we entered into a four-year contract, and then guess what? We don't have any more hitching posts and we don't need buggy whips anymore. I just, it's, I think it needs to fall, and I don't know where you would put that wordsmithing-wise as far as making sure that anything above a certain number of years needs Board approval because, again, I'm just concerned that I don't want to be locked in certain contracts just because we didn't know about it. That's it.
Okay. I have some stuff to say. And maybe this ties into you when I look at that chart. I think it's a little more complicated than it needs to be. You know, Level One can be regular budget items. You can have a two, you know, budgeted over $5,000 or whatever amount you want to pick, and Number Three, non-budgeted items. I don't really get why we need to make it as complicated as it is. I also, on Page One, could someone explain to me, under purchasing, under the rule, purchasing general, that first paragraph, the last sentence where it says, "Exception to the procedures require, under this policy shall be approved in advance by the Superintendent or his or her designee." What kind of exceptions would there be that this would apply to? I mean, I'm very black and white, if people haven't figured that out already about me, and so, when there's a rule, there's a rule, and I'm not real big on exceptions. So, somebody could tell me what that would be, so I could, you know, get an idea. I mean, is there really a need to have that in there? Because if we have rules as far as what we're supposed to do, there's, you know, our rules should cover the exceptions, you know, and by having that, exceptions pretty much leaves it completely wide open.
Tom, do you wish to?
Well, if you wanted to call on me, I didn't want to assume that. Yes, we had this looked over by several people, and the very reason it is in there is because of what you are saying right now. So that it's brought out in the open, it has transparency, et cetera, and we have an understanding of what's going on. We have certain circumstances that go on, the District have gone on for many years. Give you an example, Rasmussen Plumbing, we typically utilize them for 99% of our plumbing products, our needs, and we've used them for years. They provide free training to our employees and our staff. Because of our unique relationship with them over the years, we get high response time, preferential treatment, and competitive pricing, and we'd want to see that go on. It doesn't make any sense, in our experience, to bid out many of the things that we use them for, to other plumbers. We would destroy a local contractor relationship that has been very beneficial to this District. It would be foolish. The same is true of Van or Electric. We're using them quite a bit more. They do a lot of electrical work for us, and they train our people in proper methods in electrical work as well. There are separate side effect benefits that come out of that. We have certain product lines that, some are unique, and you can only get them from certain companies. That's kind of self-explanatory. But we also have some products that we know to be excellent, and we want to continue to use them. Wire mold is an example. You could go out and bid and find a cheaper product, but you would get a cheaper product, and it wouldn't fit in with our system and our usage. And Don could explain that in greater detail if you want. The same with fluorescer. So, we have multiple reasons for this being there. We're not saying that we're going to utilize that sentence to abandon the entire policy, and that's not our intent at all. But if we don't recognize that that fact exists, then if we go ahead and continue our healthy relationship with our local vendors, we're going to be accused of not following the policy. So, we put it in there so that we can follow the policy.
And is there a reason we couldn't just put in our policy where we have an open PO with this plumber to do maintenance?
That's a specific technical aspect. It's not necessarily the case. I don't know that we work on an open PO basis. That's far too technical for a policy. You're way down in the weeds when you use a term like that.
Well, and I don't understand how, for general purposes, if we, general purchases, why, if we know we need a certain type of metal or whatever, I don't understand why you would ever need an exception to that. I mean, if you know that's what you need, you would know ahead of time you would do the PO. So, again, I may be in the weeds, but that's how I think, you know, if, there would be no reason not to follow it. But I also think the $20,000 is too high for the per occurrence. I think our expenditures should go through our budget. As long as it's in the budget and was approved in the budget, I think, you know, it's been approved, you expend it, but, you know, this ties into what Jeff said, you know, and the $20,000, you could say, okay, well, it's just for this year, and then this year, and this year. An example even would be the wage studies. You know, they came individually just under $30,000, so they really didn't need Board approval. Whereas if it was presented that, you know, we were doing wage surveys at $60,000, it would have to come forward. So, I.
Do you have a suggestion?
Well, and that's where, like I said, I would totally eliminate the exceptions because if you do proper planning, which I believe this District does, and proper budgeting and everything else, I think we can cover that. As far as the $20,000, I actually think with the way the budgeting is done and the Superintendent does his budget, as does everybody else, we meet every two weeks. If there's something that comes up, it should just come. If it's not on the budget and it's over $5,000, I mean, I just think $20,000 is just way too much, then it comes to Board, and I'm not even sure you need to put the $5,000, because again, we meet every two weeks. And if we need to have a special meeting for something, I don't understand why, you know, we can't do that. You know, the finances are our responsibility, so I just, I really think that's important.
There, you're recommending $5,000?
Well, yeah, I, yeah, I think $20,000 is too high, and I think one-time occurrences, you know, it says per occurrence. I don't know if we want to add, but somehow, if it's a reoccurring occurrence, it can't, the same one.
Same company?
Right. It needs to come into the budget process then. It can't be, okay, we're just going to put it in this exception here where it's not in the budget, we're just going to approve that $5,000 every year, and it's not going to come to the budget. Well, it can, I personally believe it should, for one item, it should never happen more than one time because in the next year, you should budget for it, or you should be able to look forward.
Tom, would you like to address that?
Yeah, I would like to ask a question of Tom, if that's okay.
Sure.
How long have you been doing budgets?
How long have I been doing budgets? Well, depends what you, how old is budgets? It's 35, 36, 38 years.
That doesn't sound realistic to me.
What's that?
To say that if you have a rule that there won't be an exception, and that you shouldn't have something in place for an exception when running a school district, and you're doing budgets, you've been doing budgets, I'm assuming you're pretty good at it.
Well, yeah, I've been doing it for well over three decades, almost four decades in this capacity, and as a teacher, if you throw that in, over four decades, but the $20,000, are you referring to Page One, the Superintendent's $20,000?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't change that, that.
No, I know.
The committee, not the committee, but the group of people, that's the same language that's been in this policy for many, many, many years. But a budget is only an estimate. It's not an absolute factual blueprint. Things do come up. You can't predict, and many times, you need flexibility. One of the worst things, I think, for this Board would be to lose your flexibility to be able to react to changing situations. That would be very detrimental to you and would be counterproductive to what you're, I think, everyone's goals, regardless of what they might be on this Board. You lose your flexibility and you're in trouble. So, is that you?
Yeah, I guess, I guess when Lisa said, you know, I'm a black and white when you do a budget, I think if you do your house budget, if anybody does, you know things are going to happen that don't happen every year. If you know it's going to happen every year, then you put it in the budget. But there are things, and I know there are things that come up in the school district, in buildings, just for the fact of our buildings and grounds and that they are, you know. I think it's a little unreasonable to say, if something comes up, we need to have a special Board meeting to approve it. I mean, I understand we want to know what's being spent and that, and if something special comes up, be aware of that, but I think that's taking it a little, a little far. Just my opinion.
Bob?
I haven't seen any things in the past that the Administration has abused their dollar thresholds, and I don't believe that the Board should micromanage. We need to give them the flexibility for something that comes up that nobody had foreseen. So, I would support this the way it's written.
Okay. Do, why don't we just go on on the other things I have to say? Or how do you want me to? Okay. On the procurement process, the whole RFP, I believe we need to put something in there to incorporate that it needs to be open and fair to all, and that we do not just select what vendors we want to use and submit our RFPs to. It's just bad policy to select vendors instead of, you know, when we are using taxpayers' funds. So, I really, I think that's important that that be added there.
Where is that?
That's on Page Two, under the new added RFP proposals. I think it's, like I said, and if we were to get grant funds or anything like that, there, you know, they need for those procedures to be open and fair, so.
Again, I understand what you mean with your statement that you're black and white. I would offer this in thought. There are many times when that would not be a wise thing to do. Whenever it's practical, sure, you open RFPs up to everybody, but there are times when that's not practical. There are times when you need to prequalify people, bidders.
Well, and actually, part of the conference, they were talking about how it's very poor business to do the RFQs, the requests for qualifications, and they strongly encourage that Districts stay away from those, so.
It depends on, again, it depends on what it is you're doing. As a general practice, I would agree with that, but if, I'll give you an example, if you were doing an abatement program for a particular waste product that you need to remove, asbestos or something like that, you would want to RFQ, you'd want to prequalify vendors, and ensure that they have the capability of performing the duty, because you do not want to be into a very expensive project and find out that the vendor's incapable of completing the project. So, there are instances when you need to do that, but otherwise, I certainly agree with your intent, and I would support the intent of that completely. But I would not want language that would restrict this District from prequalifying or from targeting RFPs when there are needs to do that, et cetera.
Like I said, that's, you know, the open and fair is common terminology to anyone who deals with government funds, and the RFQ was a very strong recommendation from down at the conference, so that's.
Generally speaking...
Generally speaking, when there are grants, especially when they're from the federal government, they have requirements of their own that you have to follow. So, yeah, those are typically, if they're large amounts, are typically RFPs.
Lisa, other comments on 672?
Yes. I didn't, contracts issued as a result of a quote bid or, oh, I'm sorry, page three, very top. Contracts issued as a result of a quote bid or RFP process in excess of 50,000 shall be approved by the school board. If we have the time to do a quote bid and RFP, why is there a dollar amount on there? I mean, because typically, you don't do a quote bid or RFP unless it's, you know.
The dollar amount is on there to help set a limit so that the board is aware of the fact that if there are items in levels one through four that fell through the cracker that we didn't address or whatever, and it's up to $50,000, if it's $50,000, you know, then we would bring it to the board. We would do a bid and bring it to the board.
And again, I think that the chart is unnecessarily complicated. And then the following paragraph where it talks about the interview process, I'm not a fan of that any more than I am of the RFQs. And the existing contracts that we have prefer professional services, I'm not sure why we're considering looking at those only every three to five years where a lot of them should be done annually, in my opinion. I mean, once you have your RFP established or your quote, you know, you know what you want, you essentially have your template made. So.
It's not just, if I, you want me to respond to that?
Please.
It's not just necessarily a response to workload, although that would significantly increase it. But it's, it's the fact that it's not practical to switch vendors every year in certain things like auditors or actuaries or things, actuaries, contracts. I mean, there are many contracts that it makes perfect sense to do it on a three-year basis. To do it every year would be not productive for this district. Health insurance contracts, dental insurance contracts, the like, you would not do those every year. That would not make any sense at all to do that annually. But where there might be some contracts that are smaller dollar amount ones or more mundane or routine ones that you might clearly do that every year, and we probably do do that every year. But it.
So then, should it really stayed in here after three to five years to determine? Should be let open? I mean, shouldn't it be more on the basis of whatever the service is? I mean, I personally believe, you know, you should go out every year for the majority of your services. But.
Well, I think it says, existing contracts for professional services, we review them. And we do reconsider them after three to five years. For example, our actuarial services, we have a RFP out for that that's due Friday, and we'll be bringing one of your upcoming board meetings on that. And that's the third year. So every three years, we do that.
And that's fine. I'm just saying that there are some things that I believe should be reconsidered before the three to five years.
Okay, but how do I respond to that?
Say you disagree.
Just say.
You think that, but.
Don't agree.
Yeah.
Reasonable approach.
Yeah, I mean, administratively, if we feel we need to do it more often, we would. But, you know.
Tom, you mentioned earlier that Rasmussen Plumbing you've kind of partnered with. Could you give us just a ballpark of by doing that kind of partnering, what we are saving as a district person?
I could not, but maybe Don can. Is he closer to that?
Because I think it's important to realize that when we're partnering with these.
Dollar value?
Yeah, it's a dollar value to us.
I'll give you an example. I can't give you an exact dollar figure.
No, that's fine.
I can give you an idea of the benefit to the relationship. Leroy Duda, who does most of our plumbing repairs in the district, he told me, he goes, I, I didn't ask for this. He came and says, you know, I just love working with Rasmussen. He says, when I have a problem, if I have a particular type of faucet that I have to repair and I don't know anything about it, I bring it over there. They take it in, bring me in, take it into the workbench, show me how to disassemble everything. They take their time. They don't charge us anything for that. Those are priceless relationships. So I don't know if you can put a dollar figure on it, but boy, I'd sure hate to have an uneducated plumber out there for the district trying to fix things. We've had those before. They were disastrous results. So it's, yeah, it's better that we have, I just, I'm happy with the relationship we have with them.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan. Lisa, you have more?
I think we don't want to put any aspersions. Other plumbers in the area, there are good ones too. He didn't mean that when he said a bad one. It's just that we have a relationship, a longstanding one with.
And I didn't mean a bad plumbing company. I didn't, I just said, one of our people that did not know how to repair something properly can be disastrous. That's what I meant. Not.
No, I know what you mean. Thank you.
Okay. Then on the bottom of page three, when we talk about the procurement methods, again, it may involve traditional design and build, two-stage tendering, construction management. I think there too, it may include an interview process. I think we need to incorporate the fair and open. Should be considered at the lowest possible level. So the interview process, I think, should be one of almost the last resort kind of thing. And again, like I said, the chart, I think, is way more complicated than it needs to be. But those are all my comments on it.
Thanks, Lisa. Other comments?
I just want to say thank you, Tom, for this chart because it sure helps me when I'm looking at something.
So I have a question. What are you going to do with all these changes?
There is a motion and a second to approve, second reading as presented. So if people have issues, then vote the motion down and then we'll start to deal with.
Okay. That's what I want to do now.
With the issues. Renee?
I just had a question. Why do we have all the, and I apologize, I just haven't been, I haven't been at the meetings where you've discussed this. So why did we add all this verbiage in here, making it, you know, because usually the policies are somewhat general, kind of setting the direction. But why is all, I'm just, I'm just asking why, what the, you know, why we added all of it, I guess?
Much of the, it appears added because it's all in the red outline. What we did is we moved sections and reorganized them so they flowed together better. So most of this is not new. It's just moved around in the document. New items, we're in bottom of page two, where we included the, the practice of, it's been going on for many decades, where in the budget, we have our items for our art supplies and paper supplies and things that are bid out. It's just a normal process, not the kind of bid that comes to the board, et cetera. But we wanted disclosure on it, wanted visibility. So that's new language. I put it in there so that it, it's a bid process, but it doesn't come to the board. But I wanted you guys to know about it. The other one was the language that we talked about with Rasmussen, et cetera. So we wanted to make sure that we addressed that.
Which one is that? I'm sorry.
That was at page one, at the bottom of the second paragraph on page one. In, at the bottom of page one, in the second from the last paragraph, new wordages from our first meeting, we added in 20 working days. It's always been the board's pleasure that the superintendent have this authority to respond to a reaction to an emergency or whatever. And they gave them that $20,000 per occurrence. And Jeff pointed out, well, it says we need to report, but there's no timeline on it. It suggested 20 working days, and the board liked that. So I did include that language in there. Then there was, let me think off the top of my head, there was, oh, language on, on building. Make sure I mentioned that. I did at the last meeting. But yes, at page three, it's about at the bottom third of the page, that paragraph, it said bids and RFPs for new school building construction, for example, an elementary or secondary school building, or other district facility of considerably similar square footage shall conform to the blah, blah, blah. I put that in because a comment was made in an earlier meeting when they were talking about that donated small building over here that was built, it's.
Athletic storage.
Private storage, maybe four, five, six, eight hundred square feet, not very big. But someone made the comment, well, that's a school building, so therefore it should go through all of the, the whole full-fledged process of, that you would for an elementary school or a high school. And I want to put that language in there so that clarified that, no, you wouldn't do that for a garage or a storage building. You'd only do that, you know, for a larger size facility. So I thought that should be in there for clarification. Just trying to get it in there so that there's not the confusion further on.
Was it always the three to five years?
Yes. The three to five year for contracts? Yes. That was just because the language was moved. It's been that way. It's in there now in the existing current language. Yeah.
So can, I mean, can we bring this back for another second reading? Can you review any of my comments to see if any of them are something that can be incorporated?
Well, that's not my call. That's your call. You mentioned fair and, fair and open, but I, you'd have to define what that means because that's, that's not uncommonly understood. I have no idea what that means.
Basically, we have a motion on the floor. We have to either vote that down to look at it again, or it's going to go through the way it stands.
But that isn't how we've done it in the past, is why I'm a little confused. So, I mean, I just, I mean.
Well, the way it's been done in the past, as I understand it, is that there's been a motion and a second. And if there's amendments to be made, then there's a motion for an amendment, and you vote on the amendment.
So then, my amendment then would be to incorporate at least some of these suggestions, and then it comes back for a second reading with those in, and then the board decides?
No, if you make an amendment and it's seconded, we'll discuss it, we'll vote on it, and if it's approved, it gets incorporated. And then we'll go back and take care of the original motion.
Okay. So then, I guess, all the, so then my first amendment or motion would be to amend the $20,000 per occurrence down to five on page one.
Are you doing them all? Are you doing them separately?
Separately, I assume that's how you want it.
That's probably the way to go. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. So what was the motion again?
To move this 20,000 per occurrence down to 5,000 for non-budgeted items.
I think we're waiting for.
We're waiting for.
Oh, we're waiting for.
I was just going to say, we're waiting. I haven't seen any abuse of the superintendent with the $20,000 threshold. And this 20,000 has been around, I guess, for quite a few years. So if it's been working fine, why change something? So I wouldn't support it.
Renee, we've got a motion to amend, and that is to lower the superintendent's limit in 672 from 20,000 to five. That was made by Lisa, seconded by Kim. We were just having some discussion. If there is no more, Barb, let's do roll call vote on the motion.
Mr. Larson?
No.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Shibley?
I think five is too low, so I'm going to vote.
Ms. Shirick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
No.
Ms. Faxon?
No.
Mr. Rothman?
No.
Lisa, you have.
Can I just make a motion against someone in the same sentence?
Yeah.
Prior, is basically maybe keeping the 20,000 per occurrence, but per vendor. Because then we won't have the, such is the thing that happened with the Carlson-Dietman. We have three projects, all 20,000, but they equal 60,000, and they were brought to us all separately. And it was approved before it came to the board. So if we could just put in there, per vendor.
I'll second it.
So you're saying? I'm not sure what you're saying. $20,000 per occurrence, per vendor.
Per year or forever?
It couldn't be forever. Because if we're repeating the stuff, you know, again.
But again.
I mean, because I believe in, you know, repeating the, the project with, with area contractors. We get our bigger bang for our bucks, as I think Tom has used. But, well, per occurrence. So. Are you looking for direction?
Yeah.
So per year, per year, sorry.
Just for clarification, I guess, so the vendors that we had, the contracts that we had for Carlson-Dietman never came to the board for approval?
They did not require board approval, no. That's what we were told. Two of them, I believe, did, or one of them did, and the other one didn't. I don't remember exactly. But they, not all of them did. I can't remember what the story was.
You're right. The story was that the board wanted, and the administration recommended a compensation study for, in a post Act 10 environment. And we looked at a number of vendors, and Carlson-Dietman was willing to do the work for, I think it was just under 20,000. I'm looking at the contracts. The first one was professional services agreement for, oh, let's see. I think this was the non-exempt, and that was for 19,950. And then there was a professional services agreement for the faculty and administration. That one was for 18,000. And the third one was for faculty and administration in terms of designing a equitable pay plan, and that was for 18,000. So none of those had to come to the board for approval. They'd bring them to the board as information and who was going to do the work and what the scope of services were, et cetera.
Didn't we approve the first one? I thought one of them came for board approval.
I don't remember, Lisa, but they fell under the 20,000 range.
Angel?
How about the terminology per project, since it's one project?
Well, that could be considered as three projects.
Jeff, you had your answer.
Yeah. I think that kind of highlights, I mean, I would agree with what Kim said as far as, you know, putting a limit on it. Because you can piecemeal contracts falling under that 20,000 purview and not have input from this board and enter into a contract that, you know, case in point, we wanted the administrators' salary bands reviewed. It was, luckily, it was in the contract already. But again, we never had any input as a board. It's the conditions of that contract and what we are agreeing to have that service done. I mean, I'd rather see the board as a partner and included in those kind of decisions because it is something that impacts our, I mean, especially that project in itself, it impacts almost every one of our employees. So why wouldn't this board want to be included in that kind of decision? And what the scope and, you know, what that contract entails, that's a concern that I have, that we should be a partner in that one because it is a huge decision. While overall, it's a very small amount of money compared to our entire budget. It's not like we're building a school or building an addition or something like that. It's still a huge, huge impact. still a huge, huge impact in our district.
Chris?
Yeah. Tom, does it make sense to do that by vendor or by project, as far as a, a budget?
You asking me?
I am asking you.
Well, that's an opinion statement. It, it would make more sense to do it by project than by vendor, because there could be circumstances, well, there could be circumstances in either one where that could limit your flexibility. I, Jeff used the word partnership, and I think that's the, the best way to approach it. I would recommend you leave the wording as it is and work with yourselves and with the superintendent to work through this issue, rather than try to micromanage, not my wrong choice of words, rather than to try to get everything you want in the precise wording. Because, as I sat here and I listened, I, I believe it was the board that wanted to have the study and this review of the staff, et cetera, and, and the superintendent went out and accomplished that and got the vendor. But I think there's also something to be said for, once you do that, then sharing the contract or developing that, and, you know, that was then, and this is now, and we're looking forward. So I, I would say you'd be better off to, to leave the language. This way you can give yourself the flexibility, but, you know, you work, you work with your superintendent, you decide how you want him or her to communicate with you, and work with it that way. Because any time you try to control something through wording and something like this, you might be doing something that would make, make it very difficult for yourself to operate, or could be detrimental down the road. But it gets very difficult when you try to get to that degree of specificity and try to control every aspect of what some person has to do in their job.
Well, thank you, Tom. And one of the other protections that we've now incorporated based on last week's discussion was the, the, the reporting requirement, that it be reported back within 20 business days. So, Chris, you had your hand up.
And I just, I know we had the study, and I know we, we did request what the cost was. So, I mean, I understand 18, 18, 18, and thinking that it's a combination of that amount, but it just doesn't seem practical to, you know, every time an amount is spent in a budget like ours, I, it just doesn't seem practical to me.
You know, I want to, I, I'm sorry that I don't have this at my fingertips, but I will go back and research this. The conversation for a compensation study first came when we still had committees, which goes way back. And the board, and I believe Keith, at the time, with the Human Resources Committee, did have discussions about what kind of compensation report and what was to be included. I, I'm going to go back and research that. I, I think the board did have a, a, a voice in that. I think the contract, we, we arranged the contract with Charlie and was willing, he was willing to lower his fees in order to execute the document, but I'm going to go back and take a look at those minutes of those committee meetings and of board meetings, because I, I do think there was, if I recall correctly, a discussion about what was to be included, even prior to Charlie's very first presentation to the board. The contract is dated, I signed it October the 31st, it says September 13th on it, but I'm going to go back and, and check on that. But I think Tom's point is, is well taken.
I mean, because I think we're kind of getting off topic, and I don't want to get too far off where we're kind of going against our rules. I'm going to pull the motion. I'm going to hope we can start trusting in, in the transparency of everybody working together.
I'll pull my second.
All right, thank you.
So-
All right, Lisa, you had other, other amendments you wish to?
No.
About the duration of the contracts?
The one you brought up first? You brought up, Presley?
Yeah.
Can you refresh our memory?
Yeah. I, I guess we could put it under that, that $20,000 per occurrence, and maybe put that there's a limit of a one-year contract, that anything above a one-year contract has to come to the board, even if it's below the $20,000 threshold.
I'd second that. Can you explain it one more time, please?
Yeah. Essentially saying, yeah, we'll give you up to $20,000, but it's only for a one-year contract. Anything above a one-year contract has to come back to, has to come to the board for approval.
Immediately or after the year?
Well, if, if he wants more than one year, I mean, I guess he could, you know, every year do $20,000 in one-year contract, but it's, we're only tied to a one-year contract.
On everything? On everything that we bud, that is in the budget, that has a contract?
This is outside the budget.
This is just a 20,000.
It's a non-budgeted expenditure.
Yeah, yeah. The non-budget expenditure.
You don't mean, Jeff, that if it's a three-year contract worth 20,000?
That would have to come to the board.
So you're not talking about 20,000, and you're, you're, you're actually talking about a year?
Well, anything in, it says the superintendent may approve contracts for service or above non-budgeted expenditures up to $20,000 per occurrence without prior board approval. I would say that, that I want to add the language up to a one-year contract.
So in other words, if there's a, if there's a contract that we were able to negotiate with a vendor over three years for $20,000 total, you wouldn't give the superintendent the latitude to do that?
No, it would have to come to the board for, because it's a, it's a three-year contract that you tie the, the board into.
Tom, do you remember, or Bill, the, the amount of the contract for teachers on call? Was it over 20?
Well, we pay teachers on call is-
Based on usage.
Yeah.
Okay. I couldn't remember if that was-
But that's based on, yeah, on the usage of it.
I, I, in my opinion, I, I think the $20,000 is the, I mean, in my opinion, it would be the benchmark as opposed to the number of years, because if, if you're able to negotiate a contract with somebody, and they're willing to do work over three years for $20,000 versus another vendor who's willing to do 20,000 for two years, for 18 months, or for a year, I mean, I would think you would give, I would think you would give the superintendent that latitude.
Then you just bring it to the board for, say, hey, I negotiated a great contract, it's, it's, you know, in my authority, 20,000, but it's going to be for three years, yea or nay.
And we meet every two weeks. I mean, I don't understand the issue.
The issue is trust. If we can't trust the superintendent, who we've got running the whole district and has a $100 million budget, and we want to tie his hands and micromanage it, you know, you guys sit here, Jeff, and you talk about you're not micromanaging, what would you call that? What would you call that? Because I'd like to ask you, how many contracts have you written? You've got people up here with expertise that have been doing this 40 years. They're not trying to do something underhanded. They're doing something that they recommend it will work with, with their doing and give them the flexibility to run the district. And I, all I hear is, we don't micromanage, and everything you talk about is micromanage. So I would not support it.
So if I can respond?
Sure.
Thanks, Terry. So let me play out an example, Bob. So if we entered into a contract that was $2,000 a year for 10 years into a program, and the board had no input on that, I would have real issue with that, regardless if it was, hang on. Okay, hang on. Regardless if it was a good decision or not, it's the duration of a contract that, we've had those issues before, before this board, and we've been caught in contracts that we've had to let those contracts run out. I don't think it's unreasonable to say, hey, I mean, Bob, I'm willing to say, you know, anything for two years, but then you're really pushing the envelope at three years, because it's, it's a long-term commitment, it's a long-term plan that the board should be involved in. I'm saying it needs to be a partnership, and this ensures that that partnership happens.
Angel, you had?
I just have a change in language. I'll read it, and then you guys tell me what you think. Okay, so it would be, the superintendent may approve contracts for services or approve non-budgeted, budgeted expenditures up to $20,000 per occurrence, other than by any one vendor on one project in a calendar year. Is that what you're trying to say?
No, 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 I'm saying that the duration of the contract could only be one year.
May I offer a suggestion? One word will address, I think, what Jeff wants, and I'm not saying this for or against it, just word smithing. The second sentence, the superintendent may approve annual contracts for services.
Where were you 20 minutes ago?
Well, I'm not suggesting that.
I'll change my motion.
Putting us out of our minds.
Add annual to what Angel said.
Yes.
Thanks, Tom.
I knew if we asked it.
Jeff, you mentioned that, that there were contracts, and I don't remember your exact wording, but that we had to wait to run out. Was that during my tenure here?
No.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
All right.
Bob, do you have anything? All right. There, has there been a motion in a second?
Yes, yes.
What say it?
Jeff, did you, did you pull your motion?
Yeah, I, I meant it to say annual. Yes.
Annual, and what she said?
What Angel, it's-
Oh, no, 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 not what Angel said, just annual.
So, so what's the motion then, Barb?
The superintendent may approve annual contracts.
Superintendent may approve annual contracts up to 2,000?
20,000.
If 5,000 don't go, 2,000's not going to go. Yeah. Gotcha.
Can I, can I ask a question? Tom, is, Tom, your suggestion was annually, that that doesn't fit if you put annually there. Where, where was your suggestion?
Well, then put annually after, after may, if you're going to use the adjective, yeah. Superintendent may annually approve contracts, you could say that. May annually approve contracts for up to 20,000. But I was, we're trying to get at the heart of what, it's up to you guys whether you pass it, obviously, but-
Contracts.
His intent was that it be an annual authority as opposed to a multi-year authority.
Right.
Would have to be may.
So the superintendent may approve annual as opposed to annually, because annually is just an occurrence each year, but could be multiple, whereas approve annual contracts, then it means it's only an annual contract.
I just wanted to know what your suggestion was.
Annual, sorry.
So it says, the superintendent may approve annual contracts for-
Which speaks to the heart of your-
Right.
Multi-year.
Exactly.
Okay.
And it doesn't speak to the per occurrence, per?
Vendor.
Vendor.
Any other questions? All right. Barb, I'm going to, I hate to have you do this, but read it again so that we're all on the same page.
The superintendent can approve annual contracts up to 20, up to $20,000.
Okay, thank you. All right, roll call vote.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Um, I'm going to abstain.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Shurek?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
No.
Mr. Evil?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
No.
Mr. Rothman?
No.
Motion carries.
Could it Chris vote?
Abstain. Abstain.
Chris abstained, yeah. All right, so are there any other amendments to second reading? If not, then I believe there is a motion in the second to approve second readings subject to one amendment.
Yes.
One carried.
One carried, okay.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Shurek?
Yes.
Totten?
What is this, this is on the original?
Both of them, yeah.
No.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Rothman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we're on to agenda item 9E. Glenn, you wish to speak to 9E? Here it comes.
Glenn Randall, 1024 Barley Street, Stevens Point. Just a quick numbers adjustment. We're now going on, two years ago, that everybody in the district received a payment of roughly 500 to 520 dollars. When you're going forth into closed session, the half percent that you may be discussing is one-third of that. It's the equivalent of about $3.60 a week. That's what we're looking at, $3.60 a week. I understand we're looking at two new play, new pay plans. People are going to be sitting down, administrators and teachers, and they're going to be moving forward. But something just seems to ring hollow when, if you can give bonuses based upon budgetary performance, yet only one-third of that can actually be put on a person's salary saying you are worth that amount, there is some difficulty. And what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to give the rationale that we've given before, among other reasons, why the SBA did not settle for the half percent. I mean, we were looking to bargain one year, it was brought to two, you know the history. But just move forward saying, okay, whatever the choices are, regardless of your vote, it's going to be another 75 cents a day for most people, maybe, before taxes. So understand, the numbers, the half percent, it's not a half percent. It's a half percent on the lowest level teachers, and the way we deal with people is we praise them, we give them grades, we look at effectively, and also you pay them. I mean, that's one way to look at how you value people. And after tonight, there won't be any more belaboring this point. We'll just move forward. The prohibited practice will carry through, and then hopefully, we can move forward. Thank you.
Glenn, before you go, just to clarify, you're, you're addressing the fact that we're going to talk about the status of negotiations tonight? That's what you were just responding to?
Yes.
Commenting, okay.
We're on a different one.
We're back on, we're still back, you also signed up for 9E?
No, you-
That's all right, yeah.
Really made me feel bad.
Oh, no, no, that's fine.
I heard you say, no, that one, I wanted to go away. No, I did not want to speak to that one, because my assumption was that it was removed.
9E, too.
Okay, gotcha.
It was removed.
It was removed.
You just, I'll be here, I won't speak again.
No, no, that's fine. I was just trying to clarify. All right. Approval of future agenda items. And here we are, we are deciding whether or not these will go on a future agenda. So Lisa, televising meetings.
I would just like to discuss if we feel there's a need and what our options are, seeing as the city is no longer televising our meetings, because there's quite a large population that were watching our meetings.
Okay. Do we want to try to do all three of these at once, as opposed to separately?
No.
No.
No, okay. All right.
You know, there were 6,800 people that logged into our meeting last week, and I don't know what it is today. I'm sure now I'm going to get probably three texts to tell me what was logged in today. So they're out there watching.
So anyways, I make a motion that we put it on the agenda, televising meetings.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Barb, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Shurek?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item B, board pack and electronic delivery, Bob.
Yeah. I would like to see all the board members have the iPad to receive their board packets electronically. I'm not just picking out you guys, but to figure out-
Last week, go for it.
Well, no, I'm, I'm trying to rationalize. It's about 15 miles one way to Junction City.
Okay, Bob, we-
You can't touch it.
Talk about that if it gets on, but we don't-
So what am I-
So, what am I, let me back up. Didn't Lisa have an opportunity to talk about...
It was a brief summary.
Well, that's what I was trying to make. Let me put it this way, I'll be real brief. If we all do it electronically, we save $1,000 a year, okay?
Make a motion.
We make a motion to put the board packet regarding electronic delivery for all board members as an agenda item in the future.
Is there a second?
Second.
Barbara, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Shurek? I will vote yes for you, Bob, because I believe everybody should have the right to bring it on, so I will vote yes for you.
You're too kind, thank you.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Pardon?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item EC, January 20, 2014, closed session information disclosure to non-attendee. Jeff?
Um, just think we need to discuss this as a board.
The motion?
Move to just have this on the agenda.
Second.
Second. Jeff, could you just, what is the non-attendee?
I don't, that's the language that somebody put on there.
I mean, somebody was, somebody was in a closed session? I, I'm not sure what...
It would appear that someone outside of closed session had information, it was only closed session, that's what I interpreted.
Is that what you're saying?
Oh, okay, okay.
I didn't understand...
Potentially, I don't know. Potentially, maybe, maybe not.
Oh, okay, I, I didn't understand what, what you were asking for, so, go ahead. Sorry.
Barbara, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Shurek?
Yep.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to board member comments section of the board, of board meeting agendas, and mine's not calling up here.
Yay for technology.
I love technology. Sure. Um, this clarifies our discussion from last week, and the recommendation is simply to follow the Attorney General's guidelines as we did tonight for board member comments. They, if they wish to sign up for board member comments, to tell us what it is, and for those who may, who may pass the deadline, as two of you did tonight, you have the option to, to sign up for public comments. So, it's simply formalizing the process so that when it comes up again and we go, well, why did we do it that way? We have a record of why. So, the, I recommend a motion to approve the following practice regarding board comments in board meetings and agendas, so as to be in compliance with the Attorney General's guidelines, that board members sign up for board member comments and provide the topics to be commented upon no later than the day before board packets are distributed. Is there a second? Thank you, discussion?
I would like to amend that by saying if board members are making those comments, and I don't know how we wanna word this in there, they should be allowed the same amount of time as we allow the community. Because I, I don't think it's fair to give speeches for 10 minutes. You know, somehow we need to, to at least monitor it some way, if not the same as the community, because we are elected officials. We, we have to put some kind of monitor on that.
Okay. Jeff?
Under Robert's rules, I don't think you can limit that, because they have the floor.
Yeah, okay, all right, never mind, I, I remove it then, forget it.
Robert's rules, if you actually read the statement, says a board member or a person talking has 10 minutes, if you're reading Robert's rules, and then board member can only talk about the item twice, if you're really gonna get down to the nitty-gritty. So, there is a time limit.
Maybe it can just be a discussion that, under discussion instead of amendment, that we just be respectful of the fact that we know we're going late and, you know, forgiving information. Board member comments, we're forgiving information or to ask the board to have something in the future for a discussion. And I think speeches are, we, we have so many ways that we can bring information and talk about them. Board member comments, you know, becomes a discussion, so, just, that's just an opinion.
Terry, just a comment?
Sure.
Um, and I'm, I'm not, I, I don't have a opinion about this one at all, but the, just as a point of reference for the board, the, Robert's rules notwithstanding, the board, by state statute, has the authority to set its own rules for itself. So, it can bypass Robert's rules of orders if it so chooses. So, just as a point of reference.
Kim?
So, since this is future agenda items... No, this one...
No, this is an item.
Just these two.
This is, this is here as an action item.
So, I mean, because this is what we're making, I mean, because it's already happened, so I'm not quite sure why we're doing it, because, I mean, we've already made the change, but now we're finally voting on it, so I guess I...
Well, we are formally implementing what we talked about last week, and if you recall, we did have several board members who chose to speak to board comments anyway, so...
And last week, I, I asked, you know, if we were making that change starting this next meeting, or if we were gonna vote on it like we did to make the change. So, apparently, it was changed by your approval, and so...
Oh, we're voting on it now.
And we're voting on it now, I know. I know, but it's kinda, it was changed this week already. It was changed this week by he, by, by his choice, and now we're voting on it.
People...
So, it's like moving my car and then putting gas in it. So, anyways, this is my comment.
Any other, any other comments? And that motion was seconded, so Barbara, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Shurek?
No.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, superintendent evaluation cri...
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
I didn't add up to nothing.
I, I wasn't feeling sad, it's okay.
I'm sorry.
All right, item three, superintendent evaluation criteria metrics. Angel, I think that's you.
It is. We met right before this meeting, I have all the notes done, and we can get them as soon as Barb types them up. We just added a few, we just turned them into sentences, basically. I'm giving you an update, um, as opposed to having them to hand to you, so, do you understand what I'm saying?
No, I don't know what we're...
We just did it at 6 o'clock tonight, so this is everything that we covered in open session in the workshop.
Oh, okay.
Um, I'll give the changes to Barb before we leave tonight, and we can have them email to everybody.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Any questions or comments? Item four, pay variance between old slash new staff. Lisa?
Um, well, while we have a difference of opinion as far as whether the board approved this variance, taking, the pay variance being taken care of or not, I wanted to have for the board the information as far as who all was affected, what the dollar amount was. I requested that on the 18th of January. The superintendent and I have gone back and forth, I still do not have that information, so I cannot provide that to you. So, even though we are told that we are always provided the information, I don't have it, so I actually would like to request that this remain on here until we get the information. I, again, I, I think it's very important, I guess I'll just make the motion with you guys without you having the information that I believe you need to make a decision, but that we do an immediate back pay for those individuals, which we approved at the last meeting for the 11th, 12th, 12th, 13th, 13th, 14th year, and we do not wait until the study because there's no need for a study. We know what it is, we need to pay them. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Bob?
I think at the last time we talked about this, we all agree that we want to be fair and pay as soon as possible, but I think the rationale was to wait until after the study came before, so you had all your ducks in a row, is that right?
That's correct. Lisa and I have exchanged emails, and I actually forwarded Lisa's request to Charlie Carlson, who then responded to Lisa saying that this was actually part of what he was going to be doing with the compensation study and report, and in talking with HR, it would, it would take a great deal of time and effort on part of people because there's double-checking that needs to be done with files and people's pay and so on, and there's three different levels of variance. I, I mentioned that the last time. I, I, it absolutely is not the case that, that we don't want to provide the information in a timely manner, it's part of this report, and it makes no sense to pay people when the report hasn't been finished yet, so, and Charlie tried to explain that in, in the email.
The only point I would make with that is that I was on the HR committee, and the committees did end just last April, and we, when Keith presented the information about the studies that we were gonna be doing, we were gonna have the information for the teachers by October, and then it was December, and now we're sitting here in February, and because we added more people, which the board has a right to do, and everything was, you know, it was scheduled ahead of time, and then, so that schedule went by the wayside. I, I understand that it's gonna take time, but I don't know what difference it makes. It's gonna take time regardless with Charlie to do it. I just think it's, it's just not okay to have done this to our teaching staff is the one that, not that I'm not concerned about other people, but it was mostly the teachers that we've done this, and we just, we keep waiting on it, and yet our administrators, they got contracts and we've moved ahead with them, and I'm happy for them, but I feel as a board member really responsible, and I just can't wait any longer. I understand it's supposed to be part of the study, but the question here is, are you going to have to get the information for Charlie to be able to do this? Yes or no?
He's gonna work with HR, I don't know the exact information that they're gonna have to acquire, I know a little bit about it. I, I would say, Renee, that when, when Keith initially made that presentation and said that could have that information by October, when we decided to do the contract with Charlie, the board agreed that we would wait and have that be a part of the study, and so that the inequities would be, would be made equitable once the reports were brought forward.
And that's where you and I will disagree, because, you know, I think that John Zellmer and I did ask to have it put forward, it wasn't put forward by the board president at the time, and it got kind of weight-laid, so, you know, I'll just agree to disagree, but I really think we should be addressing this. I just think...
Could somebody explain to me how this information has anything to do with the wage study?
The wage, the wage...
This is a clear inequity in pay variance between the old and new. We've talked about this for years now, or going on years, and we, it has nothing, it has no bearing on the study. The study is where we should be with the compensation level, but we know, we know which teachers are being underpaid in comparison to the new teachers that have been hired since they've been here.
Maybe you take one part of it, you take the leapfrogging.
But, you know, they, they have nothing to do with one another, I mean, really...
Yeah, I understand.
And, and, and we're talking a database, we're talking skyward here. You know, it's, it's the database of databases. You go in, you create a report. It's not, you know, you create the report, you export the data, you put it into Excel, you, you know, pick your fields that you want, you sort it however you want, get rid of anyone hired. I'm just very, very confused as to why these are mixed and why this is complicated. I, I don't get it. It makes zero sense to me.
Jeff?
In, in the presentation that Charlie gave, he showed a line that represented the pay scale. Is that correct? Do you, you recall that? And we had to determine where that line was going to be, if it was going to be at market or above market or below market.
Right, right.
Have we determined that?
No.
Not sure.
So, how can we possibly determine rate of pay until we...
But what this is...
One at a time, please.
Thought that this, that's, we were waiting for that, to finish that before we could find out where the pay inequity or where it would, what we'd have to make up.
What, what I'm talking about here is the staff that has already been employed. When we had new hires come in with the same experience, but because of everything that was going on, were hired at a higher rate of pay than the individuals that have the same qualifications but have been employed by the district longer.
Another way to explain it, Jeff, is when you had, if you had three, if, if I was a teacher here and I started in 2010, 11, and I, and I was, no, I, I was here, I had three years of experience in 2011, 12, okay? I've, I've been in the district for three years. And then we hire a new teacher with three years of experience, my salaries remain flat, I've been at the same salary the entire time I've been here. The person that came in with the three years got credit for the three years, so they're making more than I'm making even though I have three years of experience in our district. They got credit for the three years they had outside the district somewhere else, so they leapfrogged over.
So, I guess, I guess my question should be, do we have the information right now to take care of this?
We have three levels of inequity, and it's not as simple as Lisa describes. I've talked with people, the two people in HR, and it would take them about four days to get the information of these three levels of inequity, and to double-check against whom they are inequitable, that is, the people who either brought in at a higher rate, or there was used as a rubric, or the third method. And it, it would take time to do that. And again, Charlie made it eminently clear, I just looked through the contracts, it doesn't say that, but I can go back to his presentations where he said that they were going to identify where the inequities were, and to then bring forward a recommendation to rectify those with this now new group of 10 teachers and five administrators, and to do the same thing for the non-exempt. It's not a matter of saying, well, you know, we, we don't want to provide the information, that's not it at all. But I don't think, and, and the board had agreed early in the fall that when we hired Charlie to do this, that we weren't gonna cherry-pick this because it was part of the, it became part of the plan that the Charlie, the deliverable that Charlie was gonna provide. And he made it clear in an email to Lisa and then to me verbally, and, and in an email, that that information that's being requested will be made available. I just don't think it's a good idea to, and I understand about the wait time, but this is a process that everybody has said is very, very important, because it's gonna set a long-term standard for how things are done. And I don't think it's a wise idea to cherry-pick a group of individuals with that, that are only those that, that were hired at a higher rate at a time when some of those were hard to get positions, or at a time when, when they wouldn't come for anything less than what they were, they were saying. I mean, they were candidates that we wanted. I'm just saying, it's part of this process, and we ought to see the process through. That, that's all I'm saying.
And just, can I, last, one closing remark is that, in that case, you know, in, I would probably do what Lisa does, and it's black and white to me, we have already established a, a direction, steps that we're gonna take, I think we should continue then to do as I think we should continue then to do as we planned.
Renee?
I would like to make a motion that the pay variance between the old staff and the new staff, given the three criteria.
Excuse me. There's already been a motion and a second, so.
What was it? Barb?
Excuse me. It was moved and seconded.
Apologize.
That we immediately pay, back pay for individuals identified for 11, 12, 12, 13, and 13, 14.
Okay, sorry. Just a vote. Just real quick, as part of Charlie's recommendation, as I'm recalling, that was the number-one top priority to come forward first. And this is before we added the five people. I know what you're talking about, the length of time from HR with you and Joan and everything else.
And the dates changed, yeah.
I know. I'm just saying, I thought it was March. I don't know if that's going to change because we've added the five teachers in the thing. I don't know if there's anything we can do to say, this is really important, push it forward. I just don't want to stop the rest of the process while we do this because of HR and because of all the people that are waiting for this thing to come forward, so that's my only concern. I'm not saying right or wrong.
Lisa?
And I understand that, it's just that this is part of the process. It's, once it's done, it's done, so it's going to have to be done no matter what, so we've been talking about doing it. Let's just do it.
I think we could all agree that we all want to take care of this situation ASAP, but I have to agree with the Superintendent that we need to wait, so we do this thing right. We might have to wait another four or five weeks, but we've got a lot of people out there with a lot of expertise telling us to wait, and then we can do it then.
And I recall that was Charlie's recommendation at the October workshop was to, don't piecemeal it, we need to get it right.
This is, I'm, I'm going to ask this question, this probably is not something I should be asking, but nobody has. Potentially, Lisa, could your husband benefit from this?
No.
So, the, the, the.
Do you know?
Making, making equitable a situation.
For the, for, no.
Okay, I'm, I'm just asking.
And I gave you an answer.
Well, I, I'm actually trying to protect you.
I've already done that, so, but thank you. I've already asked her those same questions, and no.
I just don't know, because I don't know where the salaries fall.
And I apologize for this statement, but if we would get the report, we'd know. You would know who needs it, and then, and it would have been a little bit more educational.
Well, I'm just, I'm more, I'm more concerned about protecting the Board and the members about voting.
Is there any further discussion? We do have the motion by Lisa, seconded by Kim.
Is this to go on an agenda?
No, it's to.
Voting to.
You might want to hear the motion again, Chris.
I would like to hear the motion, please.
So wait a minute. Have we paid people over the limit that we have already approved for teachers? I mean, I guess without the information, if we're paying teachers over what the highest end, then essentially, I guess I could. Are we doing that?
I don't understand the question.
My husband is at the top of the pay scale.
Okay.
So are we paying new incoming teachers more than the top?
I'd have to go back and check.
Well, then again, if we had the information I asked for, so then I withdraw my motion because without that information, if we are actually hiring new teachers at a level of that, and that would be again why.
Well, I can tell you that, I can tell you that we are employing physical therapists at a higher rate.
Well, he's not a physical therapist, so.
But I don't know about the others.
I would like to make a motion that the pay variance between old and new staff is settled by April 1st, 2014.
Okay, and Kim, you're going to withdraw your second to Lisa's first?
I will withdraw and add it.
You'll second mine.
Yeah.
And I want to be clear that the pay variance between old and new staff does include those three items that we've already addressed.
Does the Administration think April 1st would be reasonable?
No.
Okay. What would be your timeline?
The report.
Or would you?
You said the report.
Charlie, Charlie had indicated that the timeline's going to be extended because of the new groups that have to be formed, and on, by February the 26th, I said the 24th because that's when the Board meeting is, we'll have an idea, Charlie will tell us when he can deliver the information.
Okay.
And the plan.
Well, Barb, because the information was not provided by the Superintendent as the custodian of the records, I need to recuse myself from this vote, just by the odd chance, but one surprise me.
Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Shurek?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
No.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
No.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
No.
Motion fails.
Been looking on it for a year.
Yeah, well, Lord knows.
Can I make another motion? I'm going to make a motion for the same thing, and I'm going to put May 1st.
Second.
Because I want it done before the end of the school year, because Administration has already mentioned to us that it's hard when people leave, and then you have to go back, and you have to make questions about what you're going to do. So if you did it by May 1st, then you'd have the years settled up, so.
And Barb, same comment. If I had the information I had requested, I'd be able to participate, but because it's not available, I would recuse myself.
And could I ask Administration if you think that's reasonable, Dr. Wininger? May 1st?
I don't know without talking to HR and without talking to Charlie Detmer.
But you are head of HR right now.
I understand that. I said without talking to the HR folks who actually are going to do the work, I don't, I can't give you an answer.
Okay, okay.
I just want a reminder, as we've been told a couple times tonight, this is going to be a year process now. This is something that, I mean, if I was sitting in any one of those shoes, and in fact, I was when I worked for food service in our district, I mean, I was out of the district for two years and I got back pay. So, it's just ridiculous that it's taken this long, because I can guarantee you, if there was a discrepancy in the Administration, it would have been handled already, but, so I'm hoping that we can get this finalized soon.
Just a question, could we get this, since he's going to come at the next Board meeting, you'll have the dates, is that what you're saying?
I don't know that he'll be at the next Board meeting, I don't remember that, Chris, but I said that I would, he, he indicated that as soon as, he sets February 26th as the date for the working groups to begin. He will tell us the timeline for the deliverables at that time, and I'm sure he'll have that timeline by February 24th, so it's two days before. I don't know how long he would expect to, to have it extended, but he, I mean, he was the one that wrote the, the message to the Board that I put in the memo.
Is there a way to, to let him know that we would like it done?
Absolutely.
Before the, the end of the school?
I will call him tomorrow.
That's a priority?
I'll call him tomorrow and, and ask him how he can expedite it.
Thank you.
We have a motion, a second, can we vote, please?
Barb, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Evil?
No.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
No.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Pardon?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Shurek?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
No.
Motion fails.
Is there another motion?
No, I don't think anybody will support it, so I'll let it go, but I've heard Charlie say at his first meeting that he, when I was still on the HR Committee, we still had, that he thought he was outraged, or not outraged, but he thought it was a real issue that we had to get addressed right away, and as time has gone on, he's kind of mellowed with his comments, but we've had emails from staff that have identified what his verbiage was, so if this Board isn't willing to set a date that the Administration can be accountable, I accept that. So I just am very passionate about this, and I wish we could do something then.
Moving on to Item.
I'm going to make another motion. If we could make a motion on having the pay variance, and I'm going to go by May 1st just to give them a little bit of, of, of time.
I said May 1st, it appealed.
Yep, May 1st, without, without Mark, Mr. Totten's variance pay in there.
You can't, you can't do that, because he's looking at all of the employees. You can't, you can't leave one employee out.
Well, since we don't have anybody that really knows that rule, but, okay, let's move on and get out of here.
Item Nine, E6.
Sorry, staff.
Jeff, Evil has agreed to, to take over temporarily the Legislative Liaison position, so is there a motion to approve, Jeff, as the temporary?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Barb, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Shurek?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
I have to be out of here by 11:30. I've got to go to the.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
And carries.
All right, is there a motion to move into closed session pursuant to State Statutes 19.85, paragraph 1, paragraph, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations, specifically Board Members, and 19.82.1, paragraph 1, 19.85, paragraph 1, paragraph E, and 111.7, to discuss and take action if appropriate